Mayor Pro Tim Rennick?
Here.
Alderman Madre?
Here.
Alderman McDermott?
Here.
Alderwoman Jones?
Here.
Alderwoman Joseph?
Here.
Madam Mayor, you have a call.
Thank you. Alderman McDermott, which one is this?
Let the lead to this.
To the flag of the United States of America and to a republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Under Texas law, our rightful allegiance should be Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you. All right, can we have Pastor Rebus? Hi. Pastor Rebus is from Church of Little John.
Goodbye, it's... Father, let me just thank you for this day, Lord. We just, uh, we thank you for the city of Jamaica Beach, Father. Lord, we thank you for our mayor, God, we thank you for our city council members, God. While I just pray for wisdom and guidance and knowledge, Lord, as they leave this city, God, we pray over this community, God, that as it continues to grow, Lord, and just flourish, God, that the city council members and mayor and any leadership, Lord, is able to just make the right decision, Lord, and just continue to make this a enjoyable place for tourists and people that live here, God. So just thank you for all that, Lord, we thank you for just, just the amount of peace, Lord, and any decision that is made, God, then just fill them with peace, Lord, and they know that that's the right decision to make, God. So it's your mighty name I pray, and then...
Thank you so much. Thank you. Okay, next, uh, from council members, can we have any comments that have been chosen to note on the agenda? All right, next, uh, is our public comment section. So, uh, to start with, Ms. Diana Sharon? If you could come up and state your name and address, please.
Okay, um, my name is Diana Sharon, and my address is 16507 Trinidad Way. Um, I just, you know, I wanted to speak about the, um, proposed ordinances for the STRs, um, particularly about the cap on STRs. I'm hoping that if there's anything that you can pass with this, or please do that. Because I think what we've had, you know, we hear a lot of talk about how the STRs bring all this to the community and all of this tax money and stuff, but we can't use that tax money for anything but more STRs. So I don't see that. Um, what we have right now, because of all of this, is we've got a bunch of empty houses right now. Houses aren't selling. Houses where no one is eating at the restaurants or shopping at the local places. Whereas if we had residents there, they would be doing that year round. And by residents, I mean, um, you know, full-time, part-time, you know, people who aren't here as investors, you know, to buy a house and rent it out full-time. So, you know, what I said, we've got houses now that aren't even suitable for residents. Residents want garages and storage and things like that, and yards. They don't want the whole downstairs and the warm, the tiny little rooms stuffed with bunk beds. I mean, retirees can't, you know, they're not interested in that. And also, everything because of prices being driven up so high by investors that, you know, they're not selling. But the other thing is like, we have sixty-two houses in here for sale right now. Thirty-two of them are advertised as STRs, or would make a grave STR. And people think, oh, that's because of all of the negativity here and nobody knows what's going on with STRs. I would argue that is not the case. C aisle, seventy-three for sale. They don't have any restrictions. So it's just a matter of economic thing, but I would hope that we can do something about this now before this can happen again. Now's the time to regulate, to, you know, put stop to this. And also, you know, I'm talking about the people coming in and buying these houses solely as an investment property. I'm not talking about people who own their house and rent it out a few times a year at offset costs. They are not the problem. These full-time, part-of-houses are the problem. And that really, you know, has got to stop. We've got to do something about it. And, um, I know that people who don't live next to one or near one don't understand the problem. But if we can stop this and put it, curtail it down, maybe it won't ever be your problem. I hope it won't be. I would like to get it back to a community where we had neighbors and residents and people whom we knew. I'm surrounded by investment houses. I don't know these people, you know, a lot of... I don't, I mean, we don't have any neighbors hardly anymore. So I would just like to get back to the old, you know, Jamaica Beach. And one thing I did remember, back when we were looking for houses, back in like two thousand four, two thousand five, it used to be a positive on the real estate investing.
Time.
No more rent, you know, never be renting. So, very, thank you.
Okay, Ms. Portch?
Hello again, everyone. I was here last time, and I'm back. You know why? Because we still have a problem and nothing's been done. One six seven oh five, Kingston Way. I'm, I'm here for the minor, John Lawan, uh, the third, and...
Kingston Road.
Huh?
One six seven one five.
One six seven oh five, Kingston Way.
Thank you.
And, uh, basically, you know, as I said last time, permitting process was started in September because of pickups with the permitting process now didn't get granted until, uh, October. And according to who, eh, eh, last time I was here, somebody was supposed to call and address it. Nobody called. She kept calling for a week and a half and finally got ahold of Kendall, who proceeded to tell her that, well, the prices have just gone up a few dollars on the permits. No, a hundred and twenty-five dollars to three hundred dollars is not a few dollars, especially not to a single mother of two who's trying to buy groceries nowadays, okay? And then on top of that, uh, the, the contractor was given a ticket for doing more than fifty percent of the job when he did less than fifty percent of the job. And even Katie, who's in charge of permitting, went over there afterwards and said, "I was wrong." And then she said she would go to court that day, and she didn't. And when the contractor called, he called, the judge told him, "This is the most ridiculous thing I've ever seen." And his parents were also cited by the city for having their lawn too long, which is not even a city issue, it's an HOA issue. And the charge is like, "Why do you even have a ticket for this? This is ridiculous." I think you people need to open your eyes to what's going on here. If you think the average person, you don't want short-term rentals here, you don't want investment property here, but you think your average citizen is capable of paying three hundred dollars for every little single thing that they have to fix, it's absolutely just, it's too much, you know? And then, that now they're saying that the contractor redid the joists. The contractor did not redo the joists. He did not remove the joists. He put one board to just make it a little bit more secure, but he didn't rem- remove it. And so now he's got a ticket for that, and he's got a failed inspection because of that. And even though she permitted initially, it was in the plans and permitted stairs and rail, now they're making her go back and pay for something else to do with the stairs. It's freaking crazy! I mean, and you know, you ask somebody to do something about it, and you know what they did? Nothing. They did nothing. That's why I'm here again today, and I'm going to keep being here every week until something is done. You people are elected, and I hope you realize, if you want to be re-elected, that you don't treat people like crap, okay? And, and not only that, but God is watching y'all, okay? And you don't treat people like that anyway. That's not a godly way, it's not a Christian way, it's not a neighborly way. This woman is trying hard to, 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 to keep this house going for her son.
Ms. Portch, we will, we will make sure, this is your adequate, this is your phone number, right?
Yeah, that's, that's my phone number on there.
Okay.
And, and you know, last time you said somebody was going to call, a week and a half later, and, and more calls and more emails is what it took for somebody to call and tell her that basically there wasn't a problem. But there is a problem. There's a big problem.
Thank you. Okay, next on the list, eh, we will look further, further into this. Kendall did, Kendall did look into it, and, and we will address Ms. Portch.
It's not Ms. Portch's property. We don't address Ms. Portch. We've addressed the homeowner.
Okay, thank you. Okay, next up is Ms. Deborah Tapper.
Deborah Tapper, one six nine one six Beach Center. I'm here to speak on the proposed short-term rental changes. First of all, I'd like to point out that two of the strongest proponents of banning short-term rentals now sit on our council. You're no longer just that angry citizen who loudly stood in objection to those pesky neighbors on your street that rent their homes. You're now duly elected members of this council. Your role in this community has drastically changed. You stood in these chambers and took an oath to follow the Constitution of the United States and the State of Texas, and to represent all the citizens of Jamaica Beach. Well, now you represent me and all the other owners of the short-term rentals in this community. Your bias no longer has a place in this room. You're bound by an oath to follow the law and duly represent all the citizens. What you're proposing with these changes as passed will have long-term economic and social effect on our community. There are cases that have been tested and settled by the Texas Supreme Court that have overcome the very same actions you're proposing. Tara versus Timberwood Court, Parth, addresses the violation of equal protection under the law. Sotari versus City of Austin settles the right to assemble. These rulings not only protect current owners, but any property owner in the future. Jamaica Beach has the right to regulate short-term rentals as long as the regulation passes the constitutional muster. Your newest pros- proposals sadly do not. These proposals are a miserable attempt by this council to shape our community into an upper middle-class, elitist group, and discriminate against the hard-working folks like me. I worked hard all my life to enjoy this little piece of paradise. Renting our home has allowed us to enjoy this paradise for about six months out of the year. But because I don't fit into your definition of a full-timer, you want to regulate away my rights. Two years ago, my right to vote in this community was challenged by a couple of full-timers. Our names were sent to Galveston County on a list of suspected voter fraud. I still haven't gotten an apology. All of this is so reminiscent of the nineteen-sixties, when neighbors became scared and upset when black families moved in next door. Their reaction was redlining and blockbusting to keep those undesirables out of their neighborhood. If you went forward with these unconstitutional actions, you would have made all the families that owned the short-term rental a target. We're being treated like the new black family that moved next door. I hope all of you can learn from this history, and I challenge all of you, be better. Thank you.
Can I ask a question? Do you live in Crandall, Texas, when you're not in Jamaica Beach?
I live six months out of the year here, and I vote here.
Are you already in Crandall, Texas? Short-term rentals are not allowed at all?
Short-term rentals are not an issue in Crandall, Texas, because it's not a resort community.
So is your argument principled or personal?
It doesn't affect me, because it is not. There is no attraction to Crandall, Texas for short-term rentals. Nothing. There is nothing.
Have you challenged their ordinance, uh, section three point two, chapter nine, in their city council meetings where you live, perhaps, in here?
It doesn't affect me.
Just asking.
I'm, I'm not interested in it, because it doesn't affect me. It affects me here, and this is where I live.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Robin Harris?
Should have prepared a better speech, but, um, so I was a little surprised...
Please, your address?
I'm sorry, Robin Harris, one six five two nine, Anchorway.
Thank you.
Um, I was a little surprised to see the, the list of, uh, proposals to the ordinance along with the update on the curtain ordinance, just because, uh, it seems like it's recently begun to be enforced and has some teeth, and it seems like it's quickly working. Um, just from Kendall's report, it looked like it was August twelfth. We had a hundred and forty-five, which is about half fifty, close to fifty percent. Uh, of people were violating the occupancy, and then a month back later, it went down to thirty-one listings, which is pretty impressive, you know? Uh, people are changing and, and, uh, falling in line with the ordinance that we fought so hard to come to the table with last year. So, and then next month, the ones that don't have permits are going to be delisted, and then the following month, the ones who don't pay taxes will have the taxes just withdrawn. So, um, I, I just hope we discuss why we need seventeen ordinances. If, if, I know I talked to a couple of y'all, and they said there are people converting bathroom or closets to bedrooms and things like that. I don't think any reasonable person thinks that's allowable. And if there's, if there's certain meaning that somehow, I think most people will be in favor of some sort of ordinance to allow that, uh, enforcement of that. But, but things like the operation fee, um, on top of our hotel tax and our annual registration fee, when, uh, we all know that we have more hotel tax than we can even spend, uh, this doesn't seem like a, uh, a reasonable thing. Uh, requiring, uh, owners to report their hotel tax in addition to having it withdrawn directly by the platforms. I mean, I don't really care. It just seems like you're putting a lot of owners on the, property owners. And I wonder if you're doing it from a principle, we need to solve some issues, or if we're doing it just to try to create as many obstacles and make it as hard for owners as possible. If that's the case, that's a crummy, that's a crummy way to create public policy. We don't need to do that. We need, we need all work together. Um, so I hope we all discuss that. And then to break and kind of come up with, bring up another subject that I've talked to several of you about, I do want to propose that we have a, a partnership with the short-term rentals and a lot of our local businesses. I know we talked about that. Uh, whereby we can have, uh, short-term rentals post a QR code or something that, that links to our short-term, or to our local businesses, and allows them to promote, you know, Way West could date. Or Weston could say, "We want to do free appetizers," or something. If we have all these tourists coming through, we can drive that to our local businesses, because we saw what just a little blip like Beryl did this year. It, it drove a lot of them close to closing down. And so we could turn this into something positive, uh, and use our rentals to direct that tourism back into the community, and hopefully, uh, get everybody a little bit more, uh, engaged in things. So, that's why I would thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Harris. Okay, next, Mr. Al Smith?
Al Smith, eighty oh six, Denro Drive, Texas City, Texas. I am with the Galveston County Marists Association. I just wanted to come by and introduce myself to you guys and say hello. Uh, and also, I'm with the Texas City Rotary. We have lunch at the Texas City Rotary every Tuesday, eleven-thirty to twelve, eleven-thirty to one, and I invite everybody in here to be my guest.
Thank you.
Thank you folks very much. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next is Ms. Marisol Darza Flores.
Hi.
Hi.
I'm Marisol, I'm one two six one three Cardi. Hi, everyone. I want to, I'm co- I'm here against the STR regulations. I think there's too many. We've gone over the top. We've got, we've been here, done that. It's not working. Okay, STRs, I'm going in here, I'm afraid. Mr. Brandon McDermott? I'm going to address to you what you addressed to the beautiful lady over there about whatever county she might be in or whatever part of Texas. I am Marisol. I grew up and got and was raised in Denver Harbor, downtown Houston, okay? No STRs are over there. And even if there are, there aren't any problems, because nobody wants to go to Denver Harbor for a vacation. Everybody wants to come here. And I have that obligation, I have that right constitutionally, to rent my house to whoever I want. Just like I can sell Avon products out of my house, I can rent my house. Part-time, full-time, however way I want it. You cannot take that away from me. And on top of that, you do not have the right to come into my property at any time, coming inside to check my property. It's my home, and you don't have that right. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Ms. Judith Jones.
Judith Jones, one six six one two three. Uh, I've been a little busy, so I haven't been able to read all the little things in there, but I am for limiting, limiting the amount and not letting new LLCs and everything come in and buy our property. Uh, you have allowed for residents, if they pass away, to let their people or their relatives, you know, make it an STR if you want. Now, that's fine with me, but I really, really think we need to, we not take away what we've got, but to not add any more. I guess I think it's bad. And, um, I can't remember what the other one was, I didn't write down, but I...
You didn't write it down here either, I'd remind you.
Everybody come back.
Okay, next is Ms. Lyndon Mc...
I love the way that voice...
McDonald's?
Too late.
Lyndon McDonald, forty-four thirteen Pelican Way.
Thank you.
Um, I have actually two issues. One is with the STRs. They were active last year when this whole brouhaha came out. I am not a frequent renter of my house. I like to enjoy my house. I can down, take pictures of the sunset, dip my toe in the sand. Um, I think the ordinances that you have on the books right now are sufficient. I feel like they need to be enforced. We are actually below our limits of what we rent out, because this is also our home, and we want to limit the amount of people that are in our house. We try to be good neighbors. We've installed camera systems so that we can monitor, which my husband thinks is insane, so that I can monitor our trash. I have a camera to our trash. So every Thursday or every Monday, when the guy throws my trash can across the yard and not makes it into my, um, holder, I'm on the phone to call someone, whether it be my management company or my yard guy, to please come take care of my trash can. Or if there's trash that my neighbor has called and said, "There's trash on the ground." I drag it down from Houston to put my trash where it's supposed to be. I'm a good citizen, I'm a good resident, I'm a good STR owner. We do not rent our house out to a bunch of these crazy people, like apparently are around here. If so, I would probably hear more about it. But I think limiting what is, what you already have on the books, um, enforcing the noise ordinance, enforcing how many people are heads to beds. I disagree. We were not allowed to build the bottom of our house out. I do not think that should be allowed. I'm fully in support of that. So I think last year when we were here, Austin had a big, um, trying to put through these regulations. They stopped, they were sued. They said, "You know what? This isn't going to be our focus. Our focus is going to be educating our residents, educating our renters on what the rules are and the ordinances are." And I think that's where we should. Way West was crying. The businesses were crying for us to come down. I drove down from Houston, brought my family down. We went to Way West Grill. We supported their businesses. I took a picture of it, posted it on my Facebook page, said, "Y'all come down." I am fully, uh, willing to support our businesses down here, but I think by limiting and putting an end to it on STRs are against what is good for Jamaica Beach. And when I was buying my house in Jamaica Beach, I did not buy in C aisle, because there was gang writing on the side of a cement post in there. I came to Jamaica Beach and said, "This is where I want to live. My name, my children's name is in the cement of our house. We plan on passing our house on to our children, and this is where I would love to be."
Thank you. Kendall, that's mine, the people present.
Yep. I have a few more comments. Zachary Strickland, one six five six four Pelican Road. I oppose topic number two on the discussion about STRs in regards to no new STR permits. With the fees, regulations, and challenges, it's my opinion that there doesn't need to be a new law that regulates the number of short-term rentals. The number of active listings is actually decreasing, and you see long-time rentals, such as Living the Dream, going up for sale. The city may disagree with this statement and say they've seen an increase in STR permits as houses come into compliance and people secure permit as a way to ensure their grandfather status. But the reality is the number of active STRs in annual likes booked is going down. I believe the decrease is caused by stricter regulations and economics. Not that I support an STR cap or the city's proposed limitations on new permits, but if something were to be passed, I believe grandfathered property should not lose their ability to ever rent again if they decide, if they decide to take a year off, get a temporary suspension, or fail to apply for the annual permit one time. On topic thirteen, I don't have, I don't believe it is right to allow suspension or revocation of a rental permit based on noise, nuisance, trash, parking, or other. These topics are all regulated by other ordinances with penalties outlined within those ordinances. Noise should be enforced according to the law, and if there's disorderly contact, conduct, the police should handle accordingly. If there's a parking issue, the vehicle should be ticketed and/or towed. Trash should be enforced in accordance with the ordinance that's been created. I believe nuisance in general is too broad of a term, and unless it lines, should be completely removed. On topic number five, STRs pay the highest possible rate in HOT tax that supports employees. Regulation and improvements within the city of Jamaica Beach. STRs also pay an annual registration fee. Adding a new operation fee seems unjust, and unless there's a very well-defined scope around how the money will be spent, I outright disagree with this, especially the fact that the fee is proposed is based on the number of bedrooms. Glenda Rogers, one six six zero two Captain Kidd. I don't understand why you're pushing the STR rentals out, then requesting people to help the local businesses. STR visitors bring people into the community, which I understand many do not want. Overcrowding at the beach, if this is such an issue, why do you live in a beach area? Some of the locals are rude and have made it harder to rent the houses. I hope to keep it rented until I can enjoy it more myself. My husband and I plan on coming to Jamaica Beach for months at a time in the next few years, but in the meantime, we need help paying the taxes and insurance. Larry Benthal, one six six three zero Nassau Way. In the FAQ, it says, "A recent community survey showed a majority of respondents favored public restaurants." How do you conclude that when only thirty percent of the votes for the amenities included bathrooms, plus previous attempts to put bathrooms for beach visitors have been rejected? Greg McDonald, four four one three Pelican Way. I built my vacation home in JB in the late nineties. It has been a great place for all of my family members to meet and spend quality time together. The cost of property taxes, insurance, utilities, and repairs are all well beyond what we could afford, so we put the house on a short-term rental program. Rental income never fully covered our expenses, but we were, but were enough so we could keep our family vacation home. In recent years, I have noticed Jamaica Beach city government targeting STR properties with proposed rules, restrictions, and fees without benefit to the homeowner. These actions led me to believe that JB city government is trying to drive the STR business away. Regardless of the motive, these actions will hurt many homeowners and possibly cause them to lose their vacation homes. I question the legality of these proposed actions, and at the very least, they are just plain wrong and unfair to the homeowners. Wendy Harris, one six five two nine, Anchorway. What is the purpose of seventeen new short-term rental regulations? After months of back and forth, we finally have an ordinance that is working. Kendall reports that non-compliant occupancy is down from a hundred and forty-five violators to the thirty-one violators in the last month and a half. You'd think that's a clear evidence that we are riding the ship with regards to disruptive STRs. Yet, the council now proposes seventeen new regulations, including an additional operating fee, with its common knowledge that the city cannot spend all the hotel tax it currently collects. This seems much more like an effort to make life hard and expensive for Jamaica Beach owners who choose to rent their homes. The job of the city council should be to address community issues by crafting sound public policy, not throwing out scattershot harassment campaigns with the intent to exhaust, overwhelm, and overcharge its residents into submission. Angelie, Angelie Demo- Demla, excuse me, forty-four oh one Pelican Road. No responsible person opposes res- no, no reasonable person opposes reasonable restrictions on short-term rentals that will improve the quality of life for both residents and visitors alike. The city's frequent amendments and impositions of ever-evolving rules for STRs is incredibly frustrating and difficult to follow, and the behind-the-scenes reports regarding the behavior of city employees within the STR apartment is deeply concerning to citizens and should be investigated thoroughly. The discussion item on occupancy would now be the third time occupancy restrictions have been amended in some form, and limiting, limiting occupancy to full bathrooms makes little sense and seems arbitrary and capricious, particularly when there is already a limitation based on bedrooms. On the moratorium, it is just outright unfair and unconstitutional unless the city is willing to pay one hundred thousand dollars or more to every, every one homeowner for taking away the, of their right to lease and their right to convey that lease. Remember that even if a city has the legal right to take away property rights, which it does not in this case, it must still compensate homeowners for doing so. In my view, there is also, also no need for the moratorium, because the rental market is thinning out as a result of the past two years of poor rental seasons. There are close to eighty homes on the market in Jamaica Beach, most of which appear to be formal rental properties that likely won't be operated as rentals anymore due to poor economic realities. There's probably a way to craft a reasonable and constitutional ordinance that could limit new rental properties, such as by requiring homeowners to opt-in to preserve their rights... homeowners to opt-in to preserve their rights to not only rent out their property, but also to freely convey that right, while others who don't opt-in forever forfeit that right. The city could also voluntarily negotiate with homeowners to pay them an amount of money in exchange for forever forfeiting their right to lease. Or why not simply ask the JBIC to hold a vote on amending restrictions to impose grandfathering and future moratoriums? The JBIC is not subject to the constitutional criteria that the city has held to. Thank you. Andrea Spearing, 16617 Jamaica Beach Road. I am dismayed by the actions of this council to treat STR owners that follow the current STR ordinances as second-class citizens. As I and others have stated many times over the past several years, enforce the current ordinances. Saddling those that follow the rules with even more infringements of our property rights is not the answer. Texas is a state that believes in the rights of property owners. You, the city council of Jamaica Beach, do not respect my rights as a JB property owner. Combining STR ordinances? Why is this necessary? Each ordinance stands alone and includes statements about amending previous related ordinances. Limit the number of STRs? Who will determine exceptions? How will this number be determined? By total of current STRs that have registered? By a percentage of total properties? By a percentage of total current houses? By a random number? Operation fee to be based on the number of bedrooms? Does the city's cost for filling the paperwork change if a house has one bedroom versus two, two versus three? If so, is a greater cost incurred? Bedroom definition? I understand the city does not want a closet being dim, turned into a bedroom, or folks sleeping on porches or in illegal first-floor build-outs, but isn't this already covered in the current ordinances? We are currently asked to turn in floor plans and current occupancy limits must agree with GCAD. Mandatory one bathroom for every five occupants? Is this in any building code in Texas, much less in JB? Why would this only apply to STRs if it is so important? Mandatory inspections? Even criminal activity requires a search warrant to inspect property, so the determination has been made that I do not even have those same rights per your proposed rules. The point of this inspection is stated to confirm the number of bedrooms, bathrooms, and egress. Is this also not confirmed by paperwork submitted by STRs to register with JB? Maximum total occupancy? What is the reasoning behind this? Who will determine the number of people that can come over for cocktails? How does the city plan on enforcing this when they cannot enforce existing ordinances? Additionally, this would suggest that a full-time resident can have a group of cocktails to watch a sporting event on TV, come spend the day at the beach or go fishing, not spend the night, but an STR guest can't? I, I know my management company, Sand and Sea, already prohibits rentals for the sole purpose of parties, so again, why is this necessary? JB already has ordinances regarding noise, lights, parking, and more. Enforce these ordinances. Don't make more. Parking, this is already covered in existing STR ordinances. Why does it need to be addressed? Bart Maury, 16617 Jamaica Beach Road. The scope and magnitude of the already passed and soon-to-be-considered STR ordinances are a total overreach of the city's rights. These ordinances have and will severely impact the value of our house. The city is opening up a can of worms, subjecting the community to imminent legal action. There is legal state of Texas precedent that has been ruled on in the course that you can't differentiate between STR owners and not STR owners.
Okay, thank you. All right. Appreciate, appreciate everybody's comments and for those of you who have eight minutes of time, just sending email, we appreciate it. Okay, next on the list, we have a special presentation today by Ms. Michelle Leslie with the Texas General Land Office. She has a presentation put together about GLA requirements for, for the beach. Thank you.
Hi, thank you for having me. I'm Michelle Leslie. I'm with the Texas General Land Office and I'm here at the request of Kendall to give a presentation about beach user fee programs, some of the rules and requirements related to beach user fee programs, and to answer any questions by city council about beach user fee programs. I also want to introduce Natalie Bell. She's the Director of Resource Management and she's over the beach dune program with the GLO. Okay, so who is the General Land Office? Just a brief introduction. The General Land Office is the oldest state agency in Texas and we're charged with implementing and enforcing the Open Beaches Act in the Texas Natural Resources Code, Chapter sixty-one, the Dune Protection Act in Texas Natural Resources Code, Chapter sixty-three, along with the beach dune rules in thirty-one, Texas Administrative Code, Chapter fifteen, and then we're also responsible for certifying local dune protection and beach access plans, including aversion responsibilities. So briefly, I wanted to kind of start with some of the allowances and requirements related to beach user fees in the Open Beaches Act. So the Open Beaches Act does allow local governments that are responsible for regulating and maintaining the use of goal-facing public beaches to charge a reasonable fee to cover the cost of maintaining the beaches, as long as the fee does not exceed the cost of public facilities and services and does not unfairly limit public access to and use of the public beach. So under the Open Beaches Act and the Dune Protection Act, the GLO has given the authority to conllegate additional rules related to beachfront construction and beach maintenance activities, and that includes rules related to beach user fees. So there are additional requirements regarding beach user fees to implement these OBA requirements in the Texas Administrative Code, so in those state-level rules, in Section fifteen point eight. So the following slides are going to kind of talk through those rules in more detail. So beach user fees. So as I've kind of mentioned, the GLO has control over the collection and custody of fees and oversees the expenditure of fees. So beach user fees must be part of a beach access and dune protection plan and must be certified by the GLO for compliance with state laws and regulation. And there's a slide kind of later on, a little bit more about that plan amendment process. But to be clear, anytime any local government wants to charge a new fee or change a fee, that has to be part of the beach user plan. That's part of their beach access and dune protection plan. That's reviewed and approved by the General Land Office in a formal rulemaking action. So fees may not be charged for right of access to and from public beaches. They're only charged in exchange for providing beach-related services. And again, they must be reasonable, taking into account the cost of providing services and facilities directly related to the public beach. So I know council has been working on a beach user fee plan, and that's why the GLO has that list of requirements we've been kind of sending to Kendall and working with you guys on. Things like a list of proposed expenditures, short-term and long-term goals. All of that information is part of these requirements to assess if fees are reasonable. So what is a beach-related service? So a beach-related service is defined as a service that's reasonable and necessary, services and facilities directly related to the public beach, which are provided to the public to ensure safe use of and access to and from the public beach. I know that's wordy. So really, that just means the services that you're providing for beach users, for their safety, or to facilitate access to the beach in some way or amenities. They must serve the areas on or immediately adjacent to the public beach. So I've included some photos of facilities and beach-related services provided all along the coast. This can include sanitation and litter control, public facilities such as restrooms, showers, lockers, lifeguarding, beach maintenance and beach nourishment projects, law enforcement, beach dune protection, restoration, and education, acquisition and maintenance of off-beach parking and accessways. As you guys are familiar, it can also cover administrative costs associated with implementing the beach user fees, but those are limited to ten percent of your revenue. I also want to note for law enforcement that there is kind of a division between law enforcement related to ensuring public health and safety on the beach and law enforcement associated with actually enforcing the fee itself. And there's generally kind of a cap, as in the entirety of your fee revenues can't be used just for law enforcement to collect the fee. There has to be some kind of limitation on that. In the past, the GLO has generally looked at a ten percent limitation for other jurisdictions for law enforcement specifically related to monitoring the enforcement and collection of fees on the beach.
Is that ten percent accumulative to the ten percent administrative fee?
Yeah.
Is that right?
Yeah.
Okay. But it's ten percent of your law enforcement estimate?
Yeah, or just ten percent, another ten percent of your in general revenue.
Okay.
You know, we don't want to see that exceed generally more than ten percent just for collection, and that's separate from your ten percent administrative.
Thank you.
So BUF requirements, some additional requirements related to beach user fees. So beach user fees must maintain free public access by providing areas where no fee is charged. So in each local jurisdiction where you see a beach user fee being charged, there has to be a free area, and that free area has to be conspicuously signed or identified. Typically, also identified in a clear map that's made available to the public and then a sign that says free or, you know, fee area. Fee, a local government may not impose a fee that exceeds the necessary and actual cost of providing reasonable beach-related public facilities and services. So this is where a lot of the long-term projects kind of come into play. Like maybe if you end up charging a fee and you're accumulating some revenue, there has to be a plan for that revenue that has to be spent on beach-related services. A fee may also not unfairly limit public use of and access to and from public beaches in any manner, and it cannot discriminate on the basis of residence. So there can't be a different fee for residents. There can't be special provisions associated with your fee that is discriminatory based on residence, and it can't be inconsistent with the OBA or any of the rules that were kind of discussed earlier today. So I wanted to kind of share some of the BUF rates across Texas. So we'll kind of start with Cameron County down south. Their fee is a hundred dollars annual and thirty-five dollars for thirty-day, fifteen dollars daily. I do want to point out, like I know this seems high, but this is a seasonal fee, and a lot of this fee's been to build three or four new, brand-new beach parks with restrooms, pavilions, showers, and various amenities. So that's how that fee is reasonable for the services that they're providing at those parks specifically. Moving to your middle coast area, there's only an annual fee for Corpus Christi, New Angetos County, and the City of Port Aransas, and their fee, it's actually one fee for all three jurisdictions. So if you buy a sticker in one of those jurisdictions, that covers you for all three of them. And in exchange for that fee, they provide porta-potties across the beach. They provide rent stations, beach maintenance activities, and some beach nourishment activities as well. Mata Borda County has an annual fee of ten dollars. They also provide restrooms and some rent stations along with beach maintenance activities and park. Brazileira County has an annual fee of twenty-five dollars and a daily fee of five dollars. That's specifically for two beach parks, San Juan Pass County Park and Quintona County Park where there's restrooms. I think there's a pavilion at Quintona Beach County Park and some rent stations. Village of Surfside Beach charges an annual fee of thirty dollars and then daily fee of fifteen dollars. I think you guys are familiar with their facilities. There's porta-potties, typically seasonal, and then their parks also have permanent amenities. Galveston County has an annual fee of ten dollars with an early bird fee of five dollars in January and February. City of Galveston has an annual fee of fifty dollars and a daily fee of fifteen dollars at their, their main parks, so Surat Beach Park, Delanera Park, East Beach Park. And then the Seawall has the two dollar an hour fee, minimum of two hours, sixteen dollars max. There's a little more complicated, and then annual fee of forty-five dollars. And again, the city's parks have those, those facilities. I'm sure you guys are familiar with the restrooms and the rent stations with other amenities. I do want to mention too, South Padre Island does have the authority to charge a fee. They have the authority to charge a fifty-dollar seasonal fee and a thirteen-dollar daily fee. But I put that in gray because after passing their fee, they decided that it wasn't actually feasible to implement the fee that they've proposed, and that the cost of implementing the fee far exceeded the revenue that they were going to be receiving. So while they have that approval, they're not currently charging the beach user fee in their jurisdiction. Beach dune plan amendments. So like I mentioned previously, the GLO must review and certify amendments to the local dune protection and beach access plans as consistent with the beach dune rules, the Open Beaches Act, and the Dune Protection Act. So what does this mean? Let's kind of break this down a little bit. So the GLO is available to assist local governments with informal reviews of changes. So this, by informal, we mean before an ordinance is passed. And that's kind of the process that we've been doing, right? Kind of sending back and forth, some track changes with Kindles, and now we're working on an actual letter, an informal comment letter, kind of identifying all of the things that we think maybe need to be addressed before formal submission. That letter is just about ready. I think we'll be able to send that to you guys early next week. Apologies for the delay. Our legal department is really short-staffed, so it's taken a while for them to, to review things. So after the informal review process, once you guys feel like you're in a good place with your plan and you feel like you have something that the GLO could approve, then you would pass an ordinance, right, approving that plan. And that would start the formal review process, once that ordinance is submitted to the GLO. This can be around a six to nine-month process that requires a formal rulemaking procedure. So all of the local beach access and dune protection plans are certified as consistent with state law through formal rulemaking action. So that means there is a subsection of the Texas state-level rules where we certify each plan. So we have to post that certification status to the Texas Register and an initial rulemaking action. That is open for public comment for a period of thirty days. After that thirty-day public comment period, the GLO has to post another final adoption rulemaking action to the Texas Register, where we respond to every comment that's received during the public comment period. So if you guys get, for example, twenty-five comments, we have to respond to each comment. If you get four hundred comments, we have to respond to every single comment specifically, even if it's unrelated, even if there's misinformation in it, we respond to every single comment. And so really, the number of comments received can indicate how long it takes to kind of put together that final rulemaking action. After we've published the final rulemaking action to the Texas Register, the amended plan can be implemented twenty-one days after the filing date. Okay, so I know that was a lot. Do you guys have any questions? There's also my contact information on the screen. If there's anything that you kind of want to send or read or discuss further, we can email.
I have a question. I'm pretty sure about it, but I'd like to hear it from you. To implement a beach user fee, do we have to have a bathroom?
That's an interesting question. So in the, the slides previously, you know, there was a lot of discussion about having a fee that's reasonable, taking into account the beach-related services being provided, right? So when we're looking at our beach-related services, we're looking for public-facing services that the public can use that can justify its fee. So I will kind of note that every single other jurisdiction that charges a beach user fee does have restrooms that are being provided. Most of them also do have rent stations and some other amenities. So I think it's just something we're going to have to take into consideration if the city decides not to charge or not to provide a restroom. You know, we might have to assess if a fifteen-dollar fee is reasonable with a restroom, without a restroom, or if that fee amount needs to be lowered just based on the services being provided to the public.
Okay, thank you.
Excuse me. What's a wait station?
What is a wait?
A wait, a wait station.
A wait, see, maybe I meant rent station?
Yeah, rent station.
A rent sta, it's kind of like an outdoor shower where people can rinse off sand. I think the, the most commonly areas I've seen that really is in Port Aransas. They have some really nice ones that are pretty far back on the beach and they're built-in. They have kind of plumbing going through. I've seen some in Corpus too. They're really popular out in the middle coast. And then there are a few parks kind of next to the beach, I think, in the Brazileira County area as well. But it's really just like a, a area for beach goers to rinse off sand before getting back in their cars.
Could you explain a little bit more about the South Padre Island, why they found it wasn't feasible?
Sure, and Natalie might be able to speak more on that because she was, that was kind of before I started at the General Land Office.
So I think what they did is they had a lot of turnover in city council and they had a different vision from one council to the next. They also did a more in-depth investigation when they, when it came time to back They also did a more in-depth investigation when they, when it came time to actually implement the fee and found that a lot of the transactions for pay-by-phone, which is what they were going to use, just exceeded their ability to take their estimated revenue in. And they just kind of made, it was, it was a very contentious issue, kind of a split decision in the community. I'd be happy to actually connect you with the Coastal Resources Manager for the City of South Padre Island. I think she might be able to provide some good insight on everything they went through with establishing that fee passing that hit. And then they're actually amending their plan now to remove it because they have decided absolutely not. But a lot of it was just going into a, a deep dive on those transaction fees and just figuring out the cost of enforcing it, the cost of getting officers out there and all that. It just wasn't really going to bring in any money.
Sure, sure. Natalie, appreciate that.
Yeah, I'd be happy to follow up on that.
I'd like to contact them.
Sure.
Thank you.
How do you guys feel about local businesses collecting fees and transferring them to the city? Do you see any problems with that?
No, we, we recommend that. There's quite a few jurisdictions that have that in place, especially Galveston County. I think that's one of their main methods of collection. I think we just have to kind of have a discussion and look at if there's a reduced fee being charged and if they're retaining any of that fee, what that amount is. But it's definitely possible and I think a good option for in-person collection.
Yeah, that's a big thing, huh? We wanted to stick, I, I think our thinking basically, can I say it? Was that we, we like the pay-by-phone because it's electronic and there's no, you know, there's no employee involved. And it seems to work very well for Galveston. We like the idea of the annual passes being controlled for our office here in City Hall. That could be a pay-by-person statement as well. I can understand you need flexibility. You know, also I can see the people on the beach that are monitoring the license tags and stuff. Maybe there's something in there that we can, I really don't know. How do you feel about it?
I would definitely recommend, and this will be in our letter, I think, having both, some kind of in-person method of collecting a fee in addition to the pay-by-phone, just for people that maybe don't have access to a phone or the internet, that are wanting to use the beach to make sure it's equitable. As Natalie's mentioned too, you know, those transaction fees, they can kind of sneak up on you and they can be pretty cost prohibitive. So if that's something you guys are really looking at pursuing strongly, I recommend contacting maybe one of the companies that you're thinking about using for a pay-by-phone to get information about the transaction fees. I know you mentioned City of Galveston. They had to go through a similar thing when they first started using pay-by-phone and had to do some, I think, negotiations to get that fee to be more reasonable for what they were collecting. So I think that's definitely an area to investigate further if you're considering that as a method of collection.
If, if, if we find that it's cost prohibitive to do the phone collection, the pay-by-phone, would utilizing the local businesses be an option as a sole method of purchasing the pass? Or would we still need an on-beach method for issuing passes?
I think if you had, if you had it available at the local businesses and maybe also available at City Hall when City Hall's open, I think that'd be comparable to what other jurisdictions provide. I think as well, what I've seen too in other areas is, in general, we have like a police officer patrolling the beach at all. If they have the, like, stickers available, maybe if someone is doing enforcement on the beach, if they have a sticker available, if they find someone that doesn't have a sticker when they're doing enforcement and they can sell it in a bear, I'd say that would be really effective. Especially in the middle coast, they use that method of collection pretty frequently.
Wait, Natalie's thinking, or about, or about thinking, we understand protecting and honor, protecting the public's life to use the beach. And, but, I mean, as far as amenities, just the fact that people are allowed to park on the beach, my thinking is that isn't a amenity. Where you do not have to park and sit on parking, part of the big parking lot that's not even close to the beach. You know, or they have to cross a highway where the free parking is, they have to cross the highway to get to the beach. I consider that a plus for us. I consider the amount of free parking we provide as a plus. And I can certainly see, and now, now begin to support, perhaps some other amenities that you have in this case.
Sure, I, I do just want to clarify again that the free parking is a requirement in exchange for having an area where fees charged. So you do have to have a free area. And there is that definition of beach-related services. It, it can include, you know, maintenance of off-beach parking and accessways. But there's kind of a long list of things included in that, right? It's anything from sanitation and litter control, so having trash cans on the beach looking as out. Public facilities, which I know we've talked about at length already. Lifeguards, any beach maintenance activities, beach nourishment activities, law enforcement, beach doom protection, acquisition and maintenance. So there is a variety of services here to kind of consider. But, you know, again, that, that free parking is a requirement.
Are you about to bank some amount of money for hurricanes or high tide events happen to save that, is not part of, you know, just bank it to use it for repairing the beach, things like that? Or does it all, or does it yearly have to be, the whole amount have to be expended to not go where we're wanting to fly?
Good question. So there does look to be an intended purpose for it. That could be, you know, in the event of doing future beach maintenance activities. If the, the fee is passed by the city and we, you know, certify the city's plan, the city will be required to submit quarterly reports to the General Land Office that outline all of the expenditures that the beach user fee revenue is being spent on and then all of the revenues that's being collected. And then if there are surplus funds, so if you have, you know, a net amount of funds and you're not in a deficit, you have to provide a statement of intent for those funds. So kind of as long as that statement of intent is kept accurate and, you know, accurately describes what you're intending to use the funds for, you know, I think that's okay. But again, you know, we have to kind of make sure we have those long-term goals identified, right? So that could be a long-term goal.
I have a question. This is Native Anne, I may have missed it, you probably described it. What's the beach nourishment activities? What are these activities?
Good question. So you guys actually have a, a project currently with the KEPPRA program, the G L O's Coastal Aversion Planning and Resilience Act group, with some FEMA money to nourish the beach. So beach nourishment refers to when you add sand to the beach to the water. So if there was any like city portion of funds going to beach nourishment, then the beach user fees could be used for that. But those projects are usually pretty costly, so it'll probably take quite a bit of saving to get there.
Thank you. And never mind, there was that art portion in the beach nourishment program that's kicking off. It's one forty-two, isn't it? One hundred and forty-two thousand?
One hundred and forty-two, five, one forty-three is what it is.
Yeah. On a multi-million dollar beach, beach re-nourishment. Yes, if it being sponsored by the G L O and so forth.
Thank you.
About parking. And we have a limited amount of space and we want, and we worry about people's safety. And we can limit how many cars are on the beach.
There can't be, the city can't put out kind of an express limitation and say like, okay, we're capping the cars on the beach to five hundred and we're turning people away. But at any point, if your police officer, like your, your chief police officer or the mayor or someone in that position makes the determination that there's a public health and safety risk, you know, a beach access point could be temporarily closed for public health and safety purposes. When that happens, the G L O does need to be certified if there's a temporary closure. It can be after the fact. It's kind of similar to when it was closed due to, you know, storm conditions and then just reopen as soon as possible.
What if it's not a specific number, but rows of cars? Say we allow one row of cars. If that row is full and there's nowhere else for anyone to park, it's not a number, but did we need to notify? Can we turn the cars away until spaces open up? Do we have to start a second row even if they're front wheels in the water?
I think that would, to me, that, I mean, I think it's going to kind of depend maybe on the, your beach conditions, right? And that's why in my mind, it's still kind of tied back to that public health and safety issue, right? Like if your beach is really wide right now, maybe you guys are having a great week and low tides, right? No storms in the, in the Gulf, really wide beach, maybe you can fit more cars versus if a storm's in the Gulf and they're completely flooded. So I think it's maybe always going to be tied to that public health and safety component. You know, access to the beach definitely shouldn't be limited if, if there's room for people to safely maneuver the beach. But we understand if it gets to a fulling out capacity where it seems like there's a public health and safety risk. But the G L O would still need to be notified. And that's as simple as an email. Kendall sends those to me pretty, pretty often when it comes up to just kind of let us know what's allowed.
So, you know, we, we're very small. We've talked about this a lot, you know. We have no space and no funds to purchase parking. So how do other communities along the Gulf get away with providing a parking spot for every fifteen feet? And that's the number of people that go on their beach. So in essence, they're limiting the number of people because they've only provided a parking lot this big. But yet, you know, we can't manage our beach traffic so that those that are there have an enjoyable time and aren't just crammed in like sardines because, because we don't have the ability to say, okay, you get, this is what a safe amount of parking and congestion on the beach is. I mean, I don't, I don't understand how you could let people establish a pedestrian beach based on this big a parking lot. With the fact that we have no money or place to do that, we have to allow unlimited cars on our beach.
Yeah, I, I definitely think you guys are in a unique situation with, you know, the, the limited size of beachfront that you have available and the limited, you know, beachfront adjacent lots that are available. I do want to clarify that that one car for every fifteen-foot rule, that's actually in regards to pedestrian-only beaches. So similar to when a local government wants to charge a beach user fee. Anytime a local government wants to propose a change to their beach access plan or vehicular restrictions on the beach, they have to propose that and amend that plan and demonstrate how that proposed amendment or how that vehicular restriction is preserving or enhancing the public's ability to use and access the beach. And I don't have the, this rule copied with me, but under thirty-one TAC fifteen-point-seven beach, I think five, there are preservation and enhancement rules and a presumptive criteria for when that preservation and enhancement is being met when a local government does propose to remove vehicles from the beach. And that's where that one car for every fifteen linear feet comes in. So if a local government's proposing to restrict vehicles from maybe seven-hundred-and-fifty feet of beach, they have to provide one car for every fifteen linear feet of beach where vehicular access is being restricted. So I can say if, you know, if the city does decide to charge a beach user fee and that gets implemented in the plan, those fees could be accumulated to be used to try to purchase or acquire an off-beach parking lot. I also want to mention the G L O's Coastal Management Program. They have an annual funding opportunity. And that can also go towards purchasing a parking lot or a property for off-beach parking. And so you could potentially, if the beach user fee is passed and adopted, leverage those funds with a potential C N P grant funding. You do have to apply for that funding, it's not guaranteed. But if it's something the city decides to propose, I'm happy to kind of work with you on what C N P would like to see and connect you with them to kind of discuss that further. And so we, I can say we do always encourage our local governments, if they're having a hard time finding funding opportunities or they're limited in that way, to apply for available funding that the G L O has to just leverage these existing funds that are available.
So is that rule applied regardless of, of beach user fee implemented or not?
Yeah, yeah, that's the same rule. So whether or not you have a fee, if you decide to restrict cars off the beach, you have to amend that in your plan. And that have to be certified by the G L O before you could, that could be implemented. And kind of like how I went through this today, there's kind of a separate set of things we'd be looking for if you change your vehicular control plan to make sure it's meeting those preservation and enhancement requirements.
How flexible would you say they are to, are open-minded to doing that type of thing?
Well, I think, I mean, I think there's, there's things in the rules that we have to, you know, follow and confirm compliance with. You know, we have to try to find a way to preserve these, right? So we have to find somewhere where parking is going to be provided at a rate of one parking space per fifteen linear feet. And it'd have to be ingress and egress to and from the beach from the off-beach parking area. So I don't know of another kind of alternative to that. You know, if there was something else the city wanted to propose, we'd definitely look at it. But that's the presumptive criteria we'd be looking at, is the one car.
It's just kind of strange that there's a limitless number of vehicles that are allowed on the beach. But if we prevented any vehicles on the beach, you have no say over how many vehicles can park locally. So it just seems like a strange restriction or a lack thereof to me.
Sure, yeah, I can understand it can be.
Or that you can't charge for parking when you're taking up a considerable amount of space, unusable space for people, right? That doesn't make a lot of sense to me either.
Well, again, I mean, the city can charge a beach user fee, it's just kind of going through the steps. Is that what you mean?
No, you were saying that you have to charge. You cannot charge parking, right? So if you were charging, essentially, you know, you could have some level of control because you, you could charge per, you know, vehicle because it's taking up an amount of space that could be used for people. So as you, you know, stack these things up, you said that you can't charge parking.
I mean, I think.
We, we established a parking lot, which we don't have the real estate to do.
With the beaches becoming.
Yeah, and we established a parking, we have, we have available real estate, as I understand it. If the other option, which would be off-beach parking, become a pedestrian beach, and if we have enough real estate to park the acquired number of cars in, we could charge people to park in there, park in those places, just like they do in, through the beach.
The off-beach, yes. My apologies if I didn't make that clear, but yeah, you, you can charge for off-beach parking.
Off-beach parking you could charge, but, you know, my situation is we, we just don't have the real estate.
If, if you charge for off-beach parking, there would still have to be like a free area as well. So kind of like if you think about Galveston Seawall, they have like free parking spaces and then they also have paid parking spaces. Similarly, if you had off-beach parking.
True.
That you're charging for, you could have, you know, paid parking area versus free parking area.
Okay. Like what Alden, you know, Alderman Jones had mentioned, and it gets dangerous because there's just so many vehicles. So you say, oh, we can't stop people from putting vehicles in there. I mean, like you said, there's.
You can park your vehicle from the beach.
I just wanted to add and clarify.
Because that's what they end up doing is parking entities illegally and.
Well, I was going to say with the size of your beach, you sort of have like a natural cap. Like when it's full, it's full. And we don't have a requirement for one row, two rows, three rows. So it's kind of like, once that first row is filled up, it's sort of at your discretion of, is it safe? Do we want a second row, you know, by why is the beach, is it crazy? That kind of thing. Just, I don't think the G L O has ever been asked, you know, feels comfortable with there's a cap of, you know, a hundred cars allowed on the beach. We're trying to make sure that there's access available. In part, that's what the free area is for. And in part, you are sort of charging a parking fee for the beach if you were to implement a beach user fee because you would have to have it to park your vehicle on the beach. And just another note in listening to your conversation, I don't think it's an option here because I think you should explain that the streets are very narrow. But that's another thing that we see local governments do is have that parking if you wanted to remove vehicles from the beach in the neighborhoods.
A lot of people, that's how hired says it, that's how the whole West End of Galveston does it. Is the beachside neighborhoods allow parking and then those, that those beaches are deemed pedestrian.
Right, so I don't think it would be impossible for you guys to prohibit vehicles from the beach, but it would certainly take some creative thinking to make sure that it's not prohibited for people to, you know, park very far away and to get shuttled with all their beach stuff. So it's, it's just going to.
Yeah, we don't want to have to bust them from the interior.
No, we're just, we're just challenged. No, we're just, we're just challenged because we are one of the few vehicular beaches left in the area. And, um, without being able to give the police some pretty strong guidelines on where and how people can park to maintain safety, um, you know, it's, it's a fine line to, to balance the only dry lawn beach left in Houston when Sunday beach goes away. I mean, there's a few more little pockets down the way that they're trying to, um, so.
Our complaints.
The beach is, the beach is, you know, it's, it's, if you make the beach our city, okay, uh, our police department has jurisdiction of, of the beach. So we can, we can establish rules based on safety.
Our complaints against the beach user fee fielded by the GLO. Say it's July fourth, we fill up a row. We can't add anymore. So we close the beach and it's one on one officer situation like that. And someone complains to the GLO that we limited their access to the beach. What's the process for resolving that dispute? Do you all have to then come in and since you want to review it? Do we have, is there a big back and forth? How does that work?
So we, we coordinate pretty heavily with our local governments. So same theory, anytime we receive a complaint, if it's something I'm not currently aware of, I can reach out to the local government to just ask for more information. So in this example, um, you know, I would first reach out to Kendall and say, hi Kendall, you know, you received a complaint about the beach closure. Can you provide additional information on this? Um, and then he hopefully respond with information. Alternatively, um, you know, if we were already aware of the beach closure, um, which is, I think, pretty likely because Kendall already promptly notifies us, you know, we would probably just share the applicable rules and regulations regarding the city's authority to be able to close the beach in emergencies related to public health and safety. Um, and, you know, I would just follow up with Kendall to verify if there was a public health and safety issue here.
So it's, it's saying that we can't accommodate any more cars. You walk on, you ride your bike on, but we can't accommodate any more parking. So it's one in, one out. You know, we're not closing the beach. We're just saying we can't safely park anymore. Um, does the GLO view that as closing the beach? If I say, okay, Mr. Officer, sitting here at our entrances, right? One leaves, we let one more come in.
Yeah, I think that's within that timber enclosure situation for talking about safety. But that's, that's tied to that public health and safety thing. I'm hearing a lot of people saying maybe just different ways, right? Like we can accommodate more vehicles safely, but police officers made that determination that there's a safety issue. You know, that's, that's all within the city's existing authority to pay that.
And, and, cause we're a golf cart, innovative, so the golf carts are vehicles as well. So that's the same thing. Golf carts in and out as well as vehicular?
Yeah, any, any restrictions related to cars, we need to be treated the same as golf carts. So like when you have a pedestrian area, um, only area, for example, golf carts are also prohibited from driving in that area unless they have a disabled blocker and are being used by or to transport a person with a disability or a veteran with a disability. Any other questions?
Thank you so much.
Appreciate it.
As usual, you've been informative, knowledgeable.
Fantastic. And if you have any more questions, feel free to let Kendall know or email me directly and we're happy to try to address those.
Thank you. All right. Next on the agenda. Thank you. Okay. Uh, next on the agenda is our announcements. Tina, you wanna fill us in on what we've got going on Saturday?
Of course, Mayor. I'll be more than happy to. Well, we're going to start off, and I just wanna give a shout out to the West End Lions Club because they will start, um, our Saturday events off with their vendor fair. So please everybody come out, support the West End Lions Club with their vendor fair that they will be hosting at the park. That starts, I believe, at nine o'clock. And then we go into our golf cart parade, which will start lining up at four o'clock at the park. Um, we'll parade around the city a little bit. And we'll come back to the park where we'll have, go into our National Night Out, where we'll have hot dogs, treats for the kids, uh, candy. Way West will be there serving food. Uh, so please come out and support them for that full day of activities. And then we'll go into our Halloween dance, which will start at seven o'clock. We're gonna try to extend it to eleven. If not, we'll cut it off at ten o'clock depending on the size of the group and who's all having fun. So that's pretty much it, Mayor, in a nutshell.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, and a reminder that next month, our city councils are on the first and third of the month instead of the second and fourth. Uh, that's to accommodate Thanksgiving. So, um, yeah, please mark that on your calendars and there'll be notices on the website as well reminding people. It is still two weeks till the next council meeting, but, uh, but we'll be the first and the third. Okay. Uh, Mr. Francis, do you have a oral report?
I do. It's gonna be very brief. Uh, it was mentioned about the beach nourishment. Um, I'll just let you know that the GLO is still reviewing contractors. They said that they, um, were asking for some more information. So we don't have a contractor selected as of yet. Uh, so that's kinda, that's kinda what we're waiting on.
Okay.
So, and then, then the other thing that I wanted to bring up is that, um, I, um, I had witnessed that uh, the Ocean Mark convenience store has, has installed video slots. And, and so I wanted, I wanted to bring that to the council's attention to see, you know, kind of what the feeling of the council is about, about such activities. Um, in them of themselves, they are not illegal. Um, they are illegal if some form of monetary payout is made. Um, and, um, you know, I, I can't speculate as to, as to any of that, but, uh, um, logic would dictate that, you know, people probably don't play them just for pure entertainment with the expectation of some kind of.
Yeah, we got, we got this for pure entertainment, right?
Yeah, so, um, but, you know, in, in research and talking with Chief Garibay a little bit, you know, other cities have handled it, you know, in various ways. Some have, have created ordinances that outlaw them within the cities. Um, some have taxed those machines, uh, so that, uh, they receive revenue from those. Uh, but, you know, that's probably larger cities where they have several of those machines, you know? Um, or just do nothing. But I did wanna bring it to the council's attention, you know, if that's something we would like to address or you would like to address, then that's something we could, you know, prepare for a future, uh, agenda.
Yes, I'm glad Chief looked into it because I would like to verify that we, we do have the authority to outlaw them if we so choose. Um, you know, I think, I don't know, I think taxing is probably not, not feasible for three machines. I mean, the, the effort is not worth the reward. So, um, yeah, could you look into a little more on?
So he's presumed, he, uh, he provided me with a, a link to a, another city's ordinance or what they've done. So I, um, I can, I can have that prepared for the next, next meeting to let you review or something, discuss it further. I, I said I don't know the council's feelings about what the thing is, but, uh, I did wanna make that note to you.
I'd like to see an ordinance presented in the next council meeting that outlaws that type of operation. Before discussion.
Yeah, let's put it on the agenda next time for formal discussion. Um, maybe not have a, you know, maybe not a full ordinance ready, but, but just a review with, just a review with legal to make sure that we could, we could pass an ordinance like that. And, uh, and then we can discuss would, would we want to do that. And, and also that will give the council members time to go out and, and for citizens to provide input as well. So we understand the general feeling in the community about video slots on the corners.
Yep.
Okay, thank you for that.
At least a draft, at least a draft ordinance.
Okay, um, at this point, we have a approval of the minutes, our consent agenda. So do I have a motion to accept the minutes from the regular city council meeting on October tenth, twenty twenty-four?
I'll make the motion to approve the minutes as described.
Uh, okay. All in favor of approving the minutes is posted in the regular city council meeting on October tenth, twenty twenty-four. All right, thank you. Okay, at this point, we have comments, reports for members of council. Um, gosh, y'all have to keep me honest. I think I'm, I gotta mayor protein running.
Um, lots of reports. I did participate in the, the October twelfth pumpkin decorating of the city park, which was a lot of fun. Um, I did paint a pumpkin myself, but I observed a lot of the, the little ones doing it and I thought that was great. So Tina and, yeah, all the volunteers who participated, I, I thought that was a really fun event. Other than that, I think it's exciting.
Okay, all right. Alderman Drake?
Um, first, uh, Kendall, could you cut this air conditioner down a little bit?
It is. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry.
I'd like to say one thing is that it is, it was just wonderful to see the mosquito truck coming down my street. Hey, I mean, this, this is one of the best, one of the nicest, brightest thing I have all week. It's operating properly too. I mean, it is putting a blast back in. And, uh, that's just great. I, I really appreciate it, uh, staff getting that going and getting scheduled and, you know, taking care of that situation.
Okay, is that it? All right. Alderman Drake?
Yes, uh, not much. You said that, uh, I was on a, I like to ride my bike in our village and I came across when I was going down Bob Smith, some of the, um, the lights, this was during the day, like at two o'clock. And they were on. So I didn't know, are they always on during the day or should they just only be coming on tonight? So the one that stands to light to me that I remember the street was Monocle Way. It was on. And then I thought, maybe I didn't see it right. So I turned my bike around and went back and, no, it was on. And then I thought, gosh, I should've taken a picture and texted it to you.
It's just the, uh.
But then I saw another one and I just retired already because I already ridden, ridden five miles. But there was another light that I could see and it's not on the street.
I don't know if I'm on top, but there is a place to record that for.
Yes, okay.
Um, but it's, the photocell is out, so there's.
That's all I have. All right, thank you. Okay, Alderman Jones?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I attended Wigipoa, West Galveston Island Property Owners Association last Saturday. Um, Galveston City Councilwoman gave updates on shows filmed. They're gonna be expanding and, um, bringing in international flights is their plan. And updates on the cruise ports, which they're adding billions of dollars of, uh, of improvements at the cruise ports. I took video and put it on my YouTube channel. Wigipoa uses that video as their minutes. So it's, it helps us and it helps them too. And, uh, it's, um, also one of my Facebook groups. So if you need to reach out to me and I'll be sure to connect you to those, to the, to either one. Um, and, um, my YouTube channel has all the videos that I've taken over, I guess it's been five or six years now that I've taken for Wigipoa and for theater and public things for the city. Um, Gina, again, what you said, decorations at the park, that was fantastic. And the kids loved it and the adults loved it. We had lots of adults come and have fun. Um, and, uh, you had everything. I think you cleaned out lobby lobby for anything to figure out.
It was the dollar store.
Well, it was terrific. It was a great idea, very clever to add that. And you put a lot of effort into it. So thank you very much. Um, and we had ten veterans signed up?
So far, yes ma'am, we have.
Okay, so we have ten veterans that have signed up for our veteran signs in November. These will be good sized signs.
Mm-hmm, yes ma'am.
That'll have their picture, their name, their branch, and the years of in-service. And we'll place them along three double O five. So anyone that comes through the city will be able to see that we've had honor our victims and appreciate their service. So, um, I know we've missed a few, but we'll keep doing this maybe next year.
Deadline.
Oh, I thought the deadline was passed.
No, deadline is Monday.
Oh, yay, then you've got some time. So hurry and call Tina and add your name to this. Um, and, uh, and that's, oh, and remember to vote. It's so important to vote. Vote, vote, vote. Thank you very much, Mayor.
Well, everyone's still black thunder, but I wanted to thank Ms. Jones and everyone working over at the church for the voting. As always, it's seamless and easy and awesome. So please go out and vote. Uh, I was gonna say thank you for giving mosquito truck out and working. That was really good. And then just as a, uh, personal note to, to you, uh, my bass player, the Army did tours in Iraq and Afghanistan. I presented with the Star, which makes me very touched. So those do mean things to people. So, uh, I think it's a really cool program. So keep it up, man. It's awesome.
All right, Mayor, can I, can I? Sure. I just remembered we have one star rally that starts next Thursday. And as a fellow biker, I just wanna make sure that people make sure to be careful. We've got people that are coming into Jamaica Beach. So I just be careful and look both ways. Cause sometimes a motorcycle may not see you. So make sure you see them. Just wanted that safety net. Thank you.
Okay, uh, on to the business. So first is discussion consideration and take action to approve a prohibited technology and covered applications policy. Mr. Francis, would you, uh, I know, I know your notes explained it but could you briefly tell council why we're doing this?
Well, well, the brief version is that, uh, um, that Governor Abbott had passed a, um, a state law that state agencies had to ban, um, using TikTok on state-owned devices. And, um, and then the, the idiots Texas legislature piggybacked and, and followed suit with that and, and made legislation that applied to, uh, local governments that, um, it, it prohibited the, the use of TikTok app on, so for us, it would be city-owned devices.
Okay, phones and computers?
Yes.
Or laptops?
Yeah, laptops, tablets, um, and they require, part of this requires a policy that, um, which I have included, a prohibited technology and covered applications policy. So it's not only specific to TikTok. It's, it's, um, TikTok and anything else that may in the future be deemed to fall in that list.
Oh, okay.
And so, but right now.
So the state legislature could come out and say.
Could be Facebook next time. I don't know. Um, but, um, yes, right now it is TikTok. But we are required to have this policy and it's required to be, um, passed before November twentieth. So.
Okay.
Um, the, the policy quite honestly is, um, uh, a template that they provide. You can kind of fill in the blanks. Um, also, um, our city attorney had reached out this week to wanna know if we knew about this and, and, um, which we were prepared for, but she did, uh, I did give her the opportunity to look at it. And so it comes to that.
Okay, uh, I just realized I didn't ask. Could I have a motion to discuss? And consider prohibited technology and covered applications policy?
I'd like that motion to discuss, consider and take action on the, to approve the prohibited technology and covered applications policy.
Okay, got it. All right, now, now, now we're legal.
Live right over that. Additionally, there, there is a resolution in your packet. Um, although it doesn't specifically state that we need a resolution, um, our city attorney, um, felt a little bit more comfortable if we passed the resolution. And, and so, um, really the motion will be to approve resolution twenty, twenty-four dash seven.
Okay. Any, does anybody have any questions, comments?
Pretty cut.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve the resolution adopting covered applications and prohibited technology policy?
I'll make the motion to approve as described.
Okay, second, I'll second that. Okay, all in favor of adopting resolution number twenty twenty-four dash seven? Okay. All right, next is a discussion and consideration of, uh. electrical project at the wastewater treatment plant. Uh, do I have a motion to discuss?
Make a motion to discuss electrical project.
Okay. So we know we need a new generator at, uh, the wastewater treatment plant. So, um, basically Kendall reached that to, um, to local firms to give us just a real budgetary review. I mean, this is not a detailed scope work. It's, it's an overview of the work required. That then we can use for whatever detailed scope of work we need as well as, um, you know, going out to, to begin for the project. Jeremiah Kendall, you wanna?
Um, well, you pretty much hit the nail on the head. So we, we did, um, our, our engineer, um, Lynn Engineering. Uh, we, uh, engaged with them for a study of the, um, of the need, the generator and the controls. Um, they provided, um, they provided us a report and some recommendations, um, of what would be needed. And that report is in, is in your packet. This one that I have on the screen was one that I provided to you earlier this week that, that it, um, has the, um, individual prices for each of the, uh, of the different recommendations. Um, the, the total, the total cost being, of the estimate being seven hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars for the construction costs. And, um, an additional, uh, estimate of ninety-three thousand dollars for the engineering portion of it. Um, if you've had a chance to read through this, basically they tell us that, uh, um, they would recommend that we rewire the entire plant. Um, because of the, um, the condition of, of the wiring age, the condition of the conduit. Um, if you had an opportunity to be out there, you'll see the condition of conduits that are deteriorated. We have opens and, you know, we have breaks in it. There's open boxes. Just it's, it's, you know, the degradation is, is pretty bad. Um, but then they, then they go through it and talk about the recommendations for the, the controls of, um, the possibility of future skate, uh, systems, things like that. Um, some improvements, uh, you know, we can, we could, if you want, um, I don't know how, how much of a rundown you want of this. Um, but it, it was pretty, I mean, self-explanatory, um, when you read through it. Um, that, you know, the first one's just a new electric server, two hundred and seventy-seven, um, four eighty Y electric service. Um, and I'll be honest, I did not, it's a four hundred amp service. I do not know what's out there. I did not, um, I did not get an opportunity to find out what is currently out there. Um, um, whether or not they're just replacing, you know, putting in the new four hundred amp service or if that's upsizing from something that we currently have.
But they are talking about, I mean, this, of course, we don't know what we're doing yet, right? Um, we will, this will, if we approve doing this project, then the next steps will be to identify, uh, a firm that can do the detailed engineering. And then from the detailed engineering, we'll go out for construction bid. And it could be one company the same, maybe both. I mean, a lot of times the construction company will, will then outsource the engineering to a company they're used to working with. But, um, I think the proposal when we first were out there, rainstorming, was to relocate the main panels. Um, you know, where they come in now on the north side of the, the plant of the building. Uh, and then the, because there's no room there, the generator would be moved to a new platform on the south side of the building. Uh, and then a new electrical service pulled in there. Uh, I mean, that, that was the proposal. That was the rainstorming. But not necessarily an optimized solution yet. So, um, yeah, I don't, but I don't know if we're upsizing the service.
So we're, we're just talking about the estimates right now, right?
Yeah, this is just a budgetary estimate.
Yeah, and really how we want to move forward.
Yeah, the steps, next steps.
Next steps.
Yeah, so as I indicated, Lynn Engineering is, is the one, um, I guess we consider as our city engineer of, of record. Um, the ones that commissioned, commissioned this study, uh, they did subcontract that to Mercer Controls, which is an electrical engineer. Um, and, uh.
To develop the.
Yes, yes. And they were the, they were the ones that, um, that were here physically looking at things and, and reviewing it and, uh, trying to make a determination of the best. Quite honestly, they're probably right. You can't just.
Put a new generator in.
Yeah.
You can't just.
You can't just put a new generator in, or you could just put a new control panel in. That unfortunately it has, um, the system's in really bad shape and it, it needs overhauls. It really does. Um, but that comes at a cost and, and it's going to come at a pretty significant timeframe too, I would think.
Yeah.
To, to get this, you know, I think the reality is it, it may not be completely up and ready to go by the time we run into our next hurricane season.
What's for?
It depends, you know, you know, it depends on how you stage it, you know, some, you know, you know, maybe some of it, but, um, so those are, those are concerns. But the, the concern I shared with you, um, in my, my weekly email was a little bit about how did we move forward? Um, on if we wanted, if we chose to go with this project and try to bid it out. Um, our current Lynn Engineers, um, formerly was Mercer Engineering. They were bought out. So their principal, John Mercer, uh, is still a, is still an engineer. He was the, um, he's still on that Lynn Engineering staff. Mercer Controls is a separate company, um, that was developed by his brother. Um, and, um, you know, so, you know, my concern was a little bit about, um, and some ethical concerns, you know, the appearance of, of impropriety. Although they're two separate companies, completely separate. Um, they've never, they've never been together at, at any time. But, um, if we chose to let engine, uh, Lynn Engineering move forward with this project and develop it and go through, uh, construction management and, you know, start to finish, you know, that, that would be the easiest way to do it. Um, but Mercer Controls by, um, all, um, all accounts is a, is a very reputable company and would certainly bid on this project and, and would have a, I think, a likely chance of, of being one of the competitive bidders and very capable of doing it. But then again, then we have some concern. I don't know if it's, if it's real or perceived, um, conflict of interest.
Optics are important.
Yeah, conflict of interest. And, uh, you know, I have, I have visited with our engineering rep with, with Lynn, you know, to share my concerns. Of course, you know, he, he, uh, he doesn't feel like there is a, a conflict interest because there have always been separate companies. Um, yes, the, they were brothers of, you know, they were brothers that owned two separate companies.
Well, they worked for, with other cities before as well, right?
Yes, they, they have. It's my understanding that Mercer Controls does a, a substantial amount of work in, in this part of Texas. And, uh, again, apparently very reputable. I've heard nothing.
Well, I think we need to bid out the, the electrical engineering part anyways. I mean, this is a good first start and we paid them for that work, right?
Well, well, yes, yes, we did.
For the evaluation and the framework that you showed here.
Yeah, yes, this, this was a, uh, for a contract not to exceed eight thousand dollars to provide, uh, the review and, and the recommendations.
Okay.
And, uh, um, but the next step would be to, the engineering design for, and go through the bid process and the construction management portion of the, of the project.
And the reality is, is we don't really have that skill set in-house, right? So the, the process would be to use our engineer of record, Lynn, Mercer, now Lynn Engineering, right? And work a contract with Lynn that says, we need you to manage this project for us. Which means you go put the bid package together, put enough of scope to, of work together, right? Take this recommendation, convert it into a true bid document with enough detailed scope that we get a good, solid bid with, with true apples, apples comparison, right? Um, so that's, that's the question is how to proceed. We don't have the in-house expertise to go develop enough scope of work. So do we want to develop that scope of work and management? Do we just want to give that to Lynn Engineering to do? Do we want to go, do, do we want to try to, I've reached out to a couple of my, you know, ex-contacts on, do they know any, uh, you know, almost small consulting that could come do, just oversee the project and help develop the scope of work, um, which everybody's retired and not interested in, uh, in being crazy. So, uh, that, that didn't go anywhere.
Actually, don't, don't we have a number and a proposal from Lynn to do the very, this very thing? To manage this recruitment already?
No.
We don't?
No, we've not, we've not reached out.
Not for, not for this.
I think, I think the way to go, I mean, I'm comfortable with having Lynn do this. The last thing we need to do was fall, is to start managing construction, managing construction projects. Lynn has some very good inspectors. They proved themselves with the water systems. Um, you know, they, they just do a very good job at coordinating the work and at managing, uh, the work and inspecting the work and reporting and reporting very well with the water city.
I mean, the other, the other option, I mean, we, I, I look at it and Kendall will jump in here. Um, you, you know, I kind of see us having two, two options and three really. You know, number one is we go to Lynn Engineering and we say, here it is, and, uh, you, you manage it. You go out and, and.
Yeah, give us a price for.
For managing.
That part of the work.
For managing it. And then they would go.
They go out to engineering too.
Then, that's right. They would take this recommendation list, make it a scope of work, and then they would go out to bid for the engineering and the construction.
Development of the engineering.
All as one, yes.
So, so the price that they quote here, that, or the estimate, engineering estimate, design cost, the ninety-three thousand?
I didn't know what that was for.
Well, that, that is for everything. That is to take it from here, develop the scope, bid out the project, handle that portion of it and the construction management.
That's what I thought that number was.
Yes.
We're agreeing to.
Yes.
So it's not to do the actual detailed engineering?
Yes.
Yes. Yes, as far as the scope of the development, yes.
Yeah, that's the detailed engineering. That's the engineering design cost.
But he's saying, he's telling, he's saying E and C. He's saying engineer and manager.
Yes.
Oh.
Yes.
In the ninety-three.
Yes.
So I didn't, I didn't read it.
No, I, and I guess I disagree. I don't think that includes, I think that's just the engineering design.
Yeah, engineering design, yeah.
Right, but I don't think that's a cost for managing the project.
Yes, that's what, that's what Brian Crager told me. Now I.
Okay.
Because if you look at that, that's like twelve percent of that, of seven hundred. That's a pretty high engineering. That's what I asked. That's a high engineering.
So that ninety-three thousand would be them managing the project, the entire project?
That is the way I understood it, yes.
Okay.
See, this process could easily run a year. Okay, so the ninety-three grand to coordinate the job, to bid everything out, to manage it, manage the contractors and to give the inspection is very reasonable.
Um, but I think that does include the engineering as well. I mean, we have a lot of physical work to do out there. The actual engineering from a detailed electrical design perspective is pretty minimal. I mean.
But from a bid standpoint. Should we, if they have unit price points?
Right, but, but that's included in that.
I think the intent is they have a lump sum unit price contract.
Yes.
They have that, they have to have enough detailed engineering to have the physical quantity.
Right, and.
To bid on. So that if they have change, we, we know how to develop the cost.
That's right, and that's what that includes. So that is the detailed engineering, which would give us the ability then to go unit cost, uh, a lump sum contract.
Are they gonna buy the, are they gonna buy one of the now, it's just a party issue?
We haven't determined that yet. Uh, there is one possibility that if we get comfort level on how many generator we need. Um, you know, reading the document, if we put soft, if we put smart, smart starters on the lowers, you know, we can get a smaller generator.
I think someone selects the year, I think, for a long while.
Be a big.
Long lead.
So.
And I thought might be generator.
Uh, so the generator is probably the longest, longest lead, uh, component at this point.
We're falling out the most critical.
If it's the longest lead item, it's the most critical.
I, I think it's there.
We're running off the city power until we get there.
And the way that they're.
So the question, the question.
Develop this engineering, we may come up with a whole different scheme. I'll do this, that, too.
That's right. And that, I mean, that would be one of the negatives if we went out to Lynn Engineering and said, you know, okay, you know, let's do this and we hire them to manage it, oversee it and go out for bid on it. Then, um, I don't, I don't know how much inventiveness we'll get in a solution if.
Here it is.
If, if they kind of already, if they, if they designed the scope of work off of this report, is this what we're gonna get? You know, we might not get any optimized solutions.
Well, that's, that's why they're engineering this and that's why we're paying the ninety-three thousand dollars so they can coordinate all of these aspects of it and make sure that we have less downtime, if you will. So they do all of these at the same time. They're not gonna do the destructive work until they have a lot of the new right infrastructure to put together, ready to go to the root switch. So it's not like they're just gonna tear it out. We're gonna be without power.
I would, I would think that part of this would be a schedule, right? Not just detailed engineering, but a schedule and a timeline.
Correct.
And the schedule would, would dictate how jobs can be done, in reality.
True.
And to your point, right? How much, we're gonna get just what they, what, right? What they see now.
Without any project changes? Well, my, my only concern is that if we go with, if we go with Mercer, which as we know will probably, if we just say, we're authorizing you X amount of dollars to oversee this project and come back, then we still have to bid it and council will still have to approve, um, moving forward. Um, including the engineering, because the engineering cost is at a level that it has to be bid out also.
Yeah, that's it. I think you need to get clarification on.
Okay, Kendall already did.
But, and.
In writing.
I was wondering if I could get Brian Crager to come to the next council meeting, if he would be available to come to the next council meeting.
An exact proposal.
I mean, are they okay to do the engineering design and take a seat, uh, you know, back and have us bid it to three other entities and not participate in the other portion of it, or is that?
There you go.
You know, is that ninety-three thousand?
Bid what other portion?
The construction, the other, uh, part of the business. So there's one portion of his management. If you're lumping it all together in this ninety-three thousand dollars, I mean, if we bid out the, the rest of the work, what's, what's included in this, uh, design cost, the ninety-three thousand dollars?
Well, see, I haven't, I haven't seen a breakdown of, that was just a phone conversation I had with him. Because I, I was like just doing question after question. I said, that's four percent. That's pretty high. And he said, no, that's everything.
Especially when you've got a one big team, right? And twelve percent is real high.
We, on one of the, I think, one, one of the proposals, was not the, the, the funneling, the pipeline, I think, that came out. And what, they gave us, gave us an actual breakdown of the different man, of management, inspection, right?
No.
And that's what you need.
Yes. Yes.
You need, you need an actual breakdown of each item that they're gonna provide, including the detailed engineering that they're gonna provide, and what that, does that include the development of the project with schedule, right? How to do the job, right? With schedule and a timeline.
Yeah, 'cause I mean, if they put the P and I D drawings together, I assume so, that's a part of the engineering thing. I mean, I, I just, I'd like to see this broken out a bit.
Yeah, they're gonna do the one lines. They'll do the electrical one lines, and they'll do the detailed design of the control panels. So, um, you know, because the proposal here is to run all new wire everywhere and new conduit, um, because what's there is very tired. And we'll also have extended downtimes when, if if we try to replace pieces by pieces and component by component, if we just try to replace, um, we we would run the risk of of, uh, our plant being down and not being able to treat, so.
One of the wiring's bad, it damages the components, right? It could start a fire or as old time.
Stuff, right?
And so, yeah, so the the proposal here is a, a new single control panel. Currently, we have three. And half of the components in each of those panels is down. It's a, it's an absolute bird's nest when you look in it. So to even, to even attempt to go through and modify that would would be a nightmare I wouldn't wanna do. So the proposal is to put in a whole new control panel on the south side of the control building, um, set a new generator, pull new everything, and and then you would be able to do a, probably an eight hour switch over from existing to new. So at that point, all you have to do is wire your end motors, which isn't, we don't have that many niggly.
Well, that's why they call it EMC. There are two parts, engineering and construction.
We know, we know.
I know you know, but.
Anyway, okay.
But if we're any part of it's engineering, the schedule, and how they gonna do it?
The question here is, you know, we can say, yes, we can get more information from Lynn and, uh, get a deep, more detail about what the ninety-three thousand entails, ask, ask him to come to the next meeting and give us an overview of that. Uh, but we can also get it in writing and then determine if.
Yeah.
If we feel we need it. Or, you know, we can, we can go out and attempt to find, you know, another resource, uh, to to oversee the management of it. You know, we could go out to a separate electrical engineering company and tell them, you know, almost start over, here's the recommendations, but we need you now to provide us, you know, we can go out to bid for the engineering of it and the project management of it.
I thought you were gonna do it. I thought you told me that you were the, you were gonna go out and bid the engineering. So now you're saying you're not gonna do that?
No, what I'm saying is, do we want Lynn to go out? Because Lynn will manage it. Or do we want to go find another company besides Lynn that can possibly do what we're gonna have Lynn do?
But with less background, don't have less background?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so starting that, no.
We just, so.
It's not a big project, so it's not that big a deal in my mind. I mean, they don't know as much about it, but we've got a lot of data points, and we've got the drawing, you know, you know, we have all the information, we just have to put it in their hands, and they have to evaluate it. But it costs a little bit of money to do that evaluation.
So the question now is, we want Lynn to be the construction manager, or do we wanna go out and work for the construction?
Yes, that's really it. Because if Lynn goes out, they will still bid everything, and it will be under our guidance and direction with with our requirements on what we want. But then Lynn would be going out and actually bidding the whole project. And they can do it either by bidding out the engineering and then the construction, or they can bid it as one project where they engineer it and construct it at once. But Lynn would be overseeing that management.
It's like hiring general contractor, right? And having subs, that's that's what she's explaining.
So do you think we should go get, actually look at another company?
Well, that's, that's what I'm asking, is do we want to, you know, have Lynn come explain more to us about all this covers, and then say, yes, we are, we're not authorizing the eight hundred and.
Understand the self, and I think the.
Twenty thousand.
Whole thing is basically, do we really, are we comfortable with just going with Lynn? Or do you wanna go out and ask another company?
That's, that's really the question. Um, or.
Stay away from the.
Tragic years.
Or do we?
I know.
I'm trying to stay away from the machine.
Or do we wanna go up and and pursue, you basically bid out the construction management of this project? Which would include overseeing the engineering as well as the construction. So, uh.
Well, Mayor, I think I'm comfortable with him coming and talking to us first, getting more of a, um, a description of what that ninety-three dollars are gonna be in writing, and, um, and going with.
Program.
And going with, um, with Lynn, because we know him, we know they're dependable, we know they do good work, they'll stand by their work, um, but.
We also have to make sure that when he breaks this down, that we, we do need a separate cost for them managing this project on our behalf, right? And, you know, I I expect it to be within our authority to not go out and bid that.
So how do we qualify this with our procurement policies of getting free bids for stuff?
Because it's profession, because it's professional services, and they don't require that for professional services.
Same way they did professional service.
Well, no, this would be, they, they would break it down, so they're doing, they're doing the project management for us at a cost. Like, then they would oversee all the bid process.
So they're gonna bid the engineering?
Yes.
And they're gonna bid the construction?
Yes. Well, if that's.
But according to our policies.
Yes.
We don't have the horsepower to do it internally.
And also, I don't, I don't know if they're gonna, you know, we need to provide input to that, it'll be based on their recommendation. I I don't know this industry well enough to know, do we need to go bid the engineering? And then once we get that, do we need to go bid the construction?
I think that's too small for that.
Or do we bid it as one project?
One project.
That's what I think is most feasible?
Or like those, yeah, and and like the list that I gave you, a lot of those, they're, they're both, like, they can do both.
Yes.
And they're reputable companies that do things around this area, you know, there's probably five at least or more, which is plenty.
Dan Manon, good.
Yeah, believe it or not, and they're mostly out of Houston, or somewhere between here and there.
I'd just see us look out and see if they're there.
But the, well, those would be people that would would actually bid the project.
Correct.
Under Lynn Engineering's umbrella, umbrella, project management umbrella.
Right.
Uh, you know, on our behalf, or oversight.
We don't have anybody here that can write the scopes and write, you know, do the bidding, actual physical, you know, bidding process, who have the experience or personnel.
So, um.
We're gonna do it.
No.
Okay, so so my, my.
I don't have that business.
My, my recommendation at this point is that we pursue exactly what that entails.
Okay.
Let's have Lynn, let's have Lynn, um, whoever that is, John and Brian both, or just Ryan, and let's talk to them about their capacity and their interest in, in managing the project for us.
Okay.
Uh, but we would still have to go get it next.
So we can do this on the professional engineering policy.
Yeah, yeah.
So, yes, I would be comfortable doing that now.
Professional services, that's a part of it.
We can do this.
Yeah.
It's two different things.
Oh, no, well, I guess when I say I'm comfortable, I, ethically, ethically, I'm com- ethically, I'm comfortable doing it, yeah, without any, without any.
It means I have a point.
Confident. So, okay, so any other clarification on requesting?
I don't think so, I'll, um, I will, I will call them tomorrow.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Have the vote, that action.
No, no, this was just a discussion.
This is a discussion.
Next, next steps for Kendall. Okay, next is discussion and consideration of proposed changes, um, to the short-term rental ordinance. Do you have a motion to discuss short-term rental ordinance?
Well, we can discuss short-term rental warrants.
I'll second that. Okay, so, um, as y'all know, we custom ordinance last year, we then did a bunch of amendments to it. Um, we have also found as, as we've been working, working through short-term rental management, there are, there are a couple of gaps that that we would like to address. So, um, looking at how to clean it up, it's combining all the ordinances into one, so you you could, you know what the ordinance reads. Right, right now, you almost need a cheat sheet where you take the main ordinance and then you scratch this out and make a note, you scratch this out, and, so we're trying to roll it all into one. Um, the other thing we have found is a lack of clarity around, uh, what of, what constitutes a bedroom. Um, before, we didn't put in that every bedroom needed a knee rest point. Um, and so specifying what the bedroom sizes and necessity for knee rest points, um, so that all of our visitors who come here can can have a kind of calming experience. So, um, that's one that came up as a, you know, you really need to better define a bedroom. Um, the other one is, as, as hope everybody knows and understands, on November first, hotel occupancy tax to be paid to Jamaica Beach, not state of Texas, is going to automatically be withdrawn and sent to us in in a lump sum manner from Airbnb, VRBO, booking.com, and TripAdvisor, right? Um, so there's, there's, there's four of them. But if a short-term rental owner is using any other platform, then they still have to remit those taxes to us directly. So what, because we've implemented that, you know, we feel it's necessary to let rental owners know, you know, as brief as we can get it, what quarterly reports we'd like to see. So, uh, right now, there's no extra documentation required. All it does is ask for your revenue, and, and then you multiply that by the nine percent owed to us, and you send us a check. Um, but what we're asking for is a little bit more detail. I've seen the reports run, they're pretty darn simple to run on air, you know, on Airbnb and VRBO. Um, it's also just a check for us to make sure there's no glitches in the system and that Airbnb, because Airbnb and VRBO are sending us to us in a lump sum. You know, we're gonna get a check every quarter for every bit of hotel tax they collected for every short-term rental in Jamaica Beach. So we're gonna get every quarter a hundred thousand dollar check from Airbnb and a fifty thousand dollar check from VRBO. That's it, just the, just a big check. But we have no idea, like I said, if it, if it kind of matches receipt. So we are looking at adding the requirements that operators or their management companies will need to support. And then, of course, that will also apply to asking to report for any non-automatically collected revenue. So if they host their own site where they manage money, you know, and then there's, oh gosh, there's fifty different platforms out there, but.
That one there, right?
Yeah, Marriott has one, Google has one, uh, there's a bunch of them out there, but we've not entered into those contracts to automatically pull and remit to us with those companies. So, um, those are kind of some of the minimums that we're looking at, uh, in passing it. But then, but then also, you know, looking at it, what are some of the other things that could better, you know, we, we know the issues with the short-term rentals. So, um, that, that many full-time residents are experiencing. So taking a look at that and going through this list, the, the point of this is to have discussions with council on, as we roll this into one ordinance, you know, are there, are there gaps or shortcomings where we feel we could, um, better enhance the aesthetic and enjoyment of the neighborhood for all? So the, the first one on the list is, you know, just saying that there's, we're not gonna issue any more permits. If you, if you own a home in Jamaica Beach on the day the ordinance passes, you would be grandfathered to rent that home forever. So if you decide that your financial situation changes, or that, um, you know, you need to rent your home for whatever reason, you.
And you don't have to have an existing permit, it's just your grandfather.
Your grandfather, that's right. You don't have to have a permit that you maintain, that you pay an annual operating fee on. If you home, if you own a home on the date this passes, then you're grandfathered forever. And, uh, and that right to rent can be transferred through, you know, if, if, to, to your kids, right? Or, you know, in the, in either sad event, either you die, or, or if you got divorced and, and say the title is, you know, y'all are flip-flopping, uh, this one gets this one now, this one gets this one now, whatever, if it's a dual name and going through a single name, then if title changes through one of those methods, that right to rent would also change. But if title changes through a normal real estate sale, then that home would not be allowed to get a permit. So, you know, and in the past, we've also talked about, you know, is there a number, right? So, you know, right now, the recommendation would be just to say, you know, Jamaica Beach isn't gonna issue any new permits. And, uh, you know, at some point in the future, it can be looked at again as, you know, hey, we, we need more revenue from the rentals, or our business, you know, for whatever reason in the future, we might get down to only having fifty rentals, you know, that might be time to look at it again, you know? Or we could also consider some number, that when we get down to this number, uh, we feel that's a rub out, the revenue received is balancing with the benefits the entire community receives, and some number from there. Um, you know, that's a possibility also. So what we're looking for here is discussion. We'll, we'll kind of go point by point on these items, and what is council's feeling on, do, do we want it in the future ordinance, or know that's too restrictive, or know that's not gonna give us any additional benefit on managing the, the, um, party houses, really?
Okay, so are we going one, number one, number two, number three, or are we bouncing around here on all?
No, we're gonna, no, we're gonna go down the list. So first of all, again, I do believe combining is a good move.
Yeah, yeah, but there are two things here. Then we have this list of things, right? That we're really doing, there are things to discuss. And, and then we have some statistics.
Right.
But these other sheets, um, three through six, this is, this is proposed upgrades to the existing, to the existing, this is upgrades to the existing, or nearly combined? It looks like they're upgrades or something.
No, these are, these are just kind of current statuses.
This is the car.
And it's also, it's also.
Oh, very system, and this is the car.
And, and the other ones we passed were on November first, it's kind of a reminder to the community and all the STR owners, that on November first, your taxes will start being collected automatically. Uh, each STR owner needs to go out and verify that their registration number is indeed listed in their, in their posting, because if not, these platforms are gonna take your listing down.
Okay.
So.
We just want everybody to understand that this is gonna go into that.
Yes.
This is the ordinance that it stands now, and this is going to go into tech in a minute. I'd say the rest, thank you.
Um, could we maybe have Kendall go over what he put in the agenda, put it up there?
Oh, you want to?
And have Kendall kind of, kind of walk us through those slides?
Yep, we can do that.
What are we talking about?
The STR update.
The status update?
Yeah, that though.
I'm all here to bring our time back to this.
Okay, so, um, yeah, this is kind of a quick snapshot of where we are as compared to what, kind of where we started. Um, three hundred and seven registered short-term rental properties, um, twenty-one properties that, um, are in violation of the ordinance and have been issued citations for having either not re-registered, um, or having never registered. So four for not re-registering, seventeen for. So, four for not re-registering, 17 for never having registered. And as the mayor alluded to, those 21 properties, if they remain out of compliance, on November 1st, they will be removed from the platforms that we have the agreements with. So, it does not mean that they get removed from every platform that exists, but just the ones that, kind of the four major ones that we talked about. So, I just wanna make sure you're clear on that. As it has been alluded to, we have made some progress. In August of this year, 675 listings were analyzed. Now, listings is underlined because that could, you know, there's 675, we only have 329, 28 properties. So, how does that? So, those are, you might have one property, property A may be listed on four platforms and we've analyzed all four of those listings for one property. So, it's a little bit confusing in that regard. But of those, 315 were unique properties. So, what that tells me is we didn't capture, we didn't look at all the listings of the properties we have, but almost. 648 listings, or 96% were registered. 27 of those listings are about 4% of those registered, of those listings that were analyzed were unregistered properties. You fast forward to September, 666 listings, in this case, 317 were unique properties. And kind of pretty much the same percentages. 96 were registered, still that 4% that were unregistered properties. But the thing here, in August, we had 145 listings exceeded the approved of maximum occupancy, where we've whittled that down to about 31. So, we've made significant progress in that area. It's been a real focus of trying to get those corrected, helping people understand, A, to make sure they're aware of what their maximum occupancy is. Also, how to go in and make sure they get them changed. There's also, not only does it, not only are we asking that they change the number that's listed, but any of the detail within that, that would describe the amount of beds or the capacity they may have. Because we were finding some that would list a maximum occupancy of 10, but if you read the narrative, you know, we got 14 beds and, you know, rooms, you know, and it would lead you to believe that they could sleep significantly more. So, we've been very proactive about going through there and calling through those and making contact and make sure that those were corrected and that anything, we considered those a violation and that we were going to, we were going to write citations for those as well. And then we put in a little bit of a graph to just kind of give you a visual presentation of what those numbers, of what those numbers. And like, again, it's a little confusing because when you're talking 660 listings, but you only have 320 properties, it's because it's catching a property with multiple listings. So, that's pretty much, it really does detail that we are making progress. We're still not there, we still got that handful that aren't compliant. But we continue on a weekly basis to try to get that compliance. And that's really, that's what we're trying for is compliance and we're not, unfortunately, in some instances, that means being punitive to try to gain that compliance. You guys have questions about that?
No.
So, that kind of brings us back to the, to the main part of the discussion and the recommendations or the possible, you know, items of discussion.
Great. So, like I said, first of all, you know, I think combining it all into one readable document will be a benefit. And then we talked about, you know, no new STR permits. And then the grandfathering and they allow the right to rent to...
Let's go back to number one, if I may. Will this also include the ordinance that says that the city administrator can do audits? And have a 10 to 15-day?
That is in that, I mean, I can't point to which number that is.
But it's in this group?
Yes, okay, yeah. So, that's in the hotel occupancy tax.
Oh, okay.
It's in the ordinance. It's in the latest ordinance. Well, it was in the 97-4 and the 2003-4.
I thought it was in 97-4, so, okay, that's good to know, okay.
Yeah, so, yeah, because 97-4 is the comprehensive one that describes it all. 2003-4 is the one that raised the rig.
Okay.
Thank you. It added a few tweaks.
Yeah, okay.
There's also a first one from, what, 78-? There's a very old one, but 97-4 overwrote, deleted the original one.
I see.
You know, sometimes it's a mid, mid 2 and sometimes it's a replacement of.
Yeah.
So, 97-4 was a replacement of the first hotel occupancy tax ordinance.
Yeah, it is really complicated to figure out which one is the one to follow.
Yes.
So, if we could put it into one, that'd be great.
Yeah, and then to talk about, you know, what's the interest in saying no more permits? Cap, no cap?
Yeah, I think we enact a cap for sure. And I think we should make the number of new zero and then, you know, if later down the road it turns out that STRs are becoming less of a problem and, you know, future city councils can readdress that issue.
And I know there's things, or Legals, I know there's a lot of concern that we don't have the constitutional right to say no permits. Legal has told me over and over that we do. Yeah. Do you have to write?
No, but I'm gonna disagree with that because we have the Constitution, 14th Amendment. It says that we can't, that people have the right to property. And just because, you know, well, I wrote something. Do you mind if I write this? This is what I believe. Capping, limiting, moratoriums, grandfathering are unconstitutional according to the 14th Amendment of the United States Constitution and Texas Supreme Court ruling of Tarver versus Timberwood. You can decide for yourself how to use your own property, but you can't decide how your neighbor uses their property as long as it's not illegal, drugs, human trafficking, or whatever. Let me read you the 14th Amendment to remind everybody. "No state shall make or enforce any law which shall abridge the privileges or immunities of the citizens of the United States, nor shall any state deprive any person of life, liberty, or property without due process of law, nor deny any person within its jurisdiction the equal protection of the law." Tarver versus Timberwood Supreme Court decision says, "As long as the home," I'm paraphrasing it, "as long as the home is used for their intended purposes, that they have the right to use their home in that way." And I'll read you the last little decision. This is by the Texas Supreme Court. "Affording these phrases, their general meetings and interpreting the restrictions as a whole, we hold that so long as the occupants to whom Tar rents is single-family residence, use the home for residential purpose, no matter how short-lived, neither their on-property nor Tar's off-property uses, violates the restrictive covenants and the Timberwood deeds." 19 other states have also adopted Tar versus Timberwood decisions. Now, you say other cities are doing it? Well, first of all, Tar versus Timberwood is Supreme Court settled. Other cities, as I'm seeing it, is bouncing from lower courts and they're spending a lot of money defending their decisions to do this. Dickinson lost, Dallas lost, Austin lost, New Braunfels lost, the losses. How much money do we want to spend on lawsuits?
And what Olson Olson tells me, because I've asked it the same way, they said, "I can't take your right away if you own it today." But if I pass an ordinance that says, "In our community, we're not having short-term rentals anymore", then you know the framework.
But that's done with deed restrictions. And your deed is what gives you the right to, if you, to, to, under the 14th Amendment in Tarver versus Timberwood, we don't have any rights or privileges over the deed. That would be, you know, moreover with JBIC. At each section, we can't do a one-swept thing because we have how many, 30 sections?
We don't have the option of putting limitations on short-term rentals with the RV instructions. Or not a reasonable...
Right. So, may I continue? I, as I see it, how much, I ask how much communities have spent of taxpayer money to defend lawsuits that are, and they're, well, I'm losing my track. But, because I'm certain that our STR owners who have...
Want to buy more property here, ask STRs?
I'm certain our STR owners will sue our city. We are not, we are not here to, for our personal, for our personal reasons, we are here to represent the city as a whole.
But I'm not taking, if you own the property now, we're not taking, we wouldn't be taking that right away. I'm not, because all of these lawsuits...
But you're not giving me the same right that I had when I bought it, which is that when I sell it, I'm selling those same rights. And I just don't believe that it's wise. And if we're supposed to be...
Is there a difference between property rights and real estate selling rights?
Property rights remain the same.
You're changing, you're able to do whatever you want with your STR, your property. It's someone that doesn't exist coming in that loses it because they are choosing to buy to a neighborhood that does not allow it to happen.
Well, then, I would say, if you are not, if you bought it into a tourist hometown that had rights to use your home, each person has a right to use their home as long as how they see fit. If you're not happy with those, we can't change the deeds easily. And so, you may have to move.
I disagree, just because you're saying what you do is your property and you're taking it to a different, and your property stays with you forever.
But no one has a right to say how someone else uses their property as long as it's, they're using it in a legal sense. It's legal to use it as an STR.
Well, we have legal on our side that says that the way we are proposing this is...
Well, I disagree. And it's not a very good, unwise use of our money as representing the entire city to spend hundreds of thousands of dollars to litigate this idea. It's, especially when we're pence to pennies on the west side of the street.
Well, they're different markets, aren't they?
It still comes out of the general purpose and it's still taxpayer money.
Well, we can use all the hot tax money we want to fight those battles if necessary. And that's millions of dollars.
I wouldn't, I don't know that that's accurate.
That's what I was, that's what I was...
I'm not sure about that.
It's all tourism, most places we're in there that say you can fight tourists. Or you can fight the same people you're on your way to.
Well, we would be fighting new ones to raise the value to the people that own them already. So, that hot tax money would be benefiting short-term rental owners in the city.
Well, your perspective thinks it's going to raise the value. Other people's perspective are gonna say that it's gonna lower my value. And there's already the law, I didn't bring it with me, but there's a law that is already said that if a city makes a regulation that devalues their property, they can sue the city for that amount of devalue.
Well, there are two things here, right? When it's long-term rentals, we're figuring for me. And we're talking short-term rentals. My gut feel is I would like to see a short-term rental limited. And I think that, this is, I don't know if this is perfect, but I think it's a right start.
I'm fine with it, with answering things.
I understand your point, okay, too, older woman. I really do understand it, okay, and I respect it. The thing being here is that, say, it's me, I'll put me in that situation, okay? I do think that I have, should have the right forever, all right, to determine what percent of my property, okay? And if I sell it, whoever I sell it to, that right should be conveyed to.
But we're not counting STRs.
But, but, we would be if I declared my property as an STR property. If I do not declare my property as an STR property...
Then you're gonna have 600 or 1,000 properties come in and do an STR. There's only gonna be a few that are full-timers that might want to come in and say, "Okay, I'm never going to be an STR."
Yeah.
I don't know that they would, why would they want to give up that right?
That's not the point.
Well, like, if I can convey the right to rent through sale, then we don't have a cap. So, I mean, there's no point in putting a cap in. Well, my recommendation...
May I also say, forgive me for interrupting you. These statistics also research, mark these, this data, and thank you, Dave, Kendall, for the data, also is telling me that we're starting to crack down on the bad actors, the people that haven't been following the rules and we're enforcing registration and those kind of things. And we've, according to the police reports the chief therapy gives us, we're seeing that we have less and less STR complaints. They've not been published in our agendas, if they, and that's the only thing that I know of.
Is that a result? I think that's a result of Hurricane Vero, the 10 days of rain.
Well, I still have the floor, forgive me that you're interrupting. The majority of our owners don't want their guests to break the rules. We have to admit that we bought and live in a tourist town. Most of our residents are older and we have just a handful of families with small children. I believe we need to revisit noise, parking, trash, litter ordinances. The noise ordinance, for instance, is confusing, what happened to the decibel thing.
Are we taking it step by step?
Let's clarify and simplify it and make all of them stronger. I also have a nuisance order, ordinance, or really, it's called an excessive response by law that would cover everyone in the city and not just target any certain group of people here. And that was given to me by a resident three years ago. And I never could get it onto the agenda to have it ever discussed before. And so, I'm gonna offer that to you so maybe we can discuss that too as another option.
I think you mentioned that only a very few residents are concerned about this or have reason to want this. But I ran solely on the issue of tamping down on short-term rentals. It was overwhelmingly elected. So, as I sit here right now, all of the over 2... So, as I sit here right now, all of the over two-hundred votes that I got are also being represented in this room by wanting to pass some of these. This is not just a few people are against it. This was a referendum on the subject. Because I ran solely on that issue so that I could say that there's no confusion about why I was elected. That is what I ran on, that's what I wanted to represent. And there's no, there's no confusion there.
Can you speak?
Yeah, I'm there too, I support what you're saying.
If we had Legal come visit us next time with a review of case law and a review of the status of where we're at and maybe make some recommendations on, you know, as far as putting in new ordinance, as far as putting in a cap and saying, we have, you know, what do we want to do?
I think the overall community would support a cap.
As long as the grandfathering exists. But we need to, you know, I think it would be worthwhile to have Legal come and give us the latest interpretations on, yeah, because, I mean, Fourteenth Amendment rights are definitely there. And you're right, a lot of people can't move and will. So, anyway, but, you know, what do we want to be? Do we want to be a community or do we want to be a hotel? And what are our rights as a government to drive the decision for the neighborhood? What right does the government have? So, my suggestion is on this one, let's have Legal come in and give us an overview. And also, anything else we say has merit in putting into ordinance. They can come and speak to us about that also. And we ran everything through Legal before, over and over and over and over when we passed the last ordinance. So, we would do the same again, but we can do it in a more public format where they actually come and give us some advice and they get more additional questions.
Would people be able to ask that questions to?
We have found in the past that the best thing to do for that is as citizens hear what Legal has to say and council will question Legal. But then if citizens have any additional questions, we'll take those and we will respond, we'll have Legal respond to those. And we are not doing it in a semi-town hall format.
I'm sorry, but it cannot, can it also be a legal representative, a legal attorney who knows the Constitution?
Our legal entity, I mean, they are, they are city attorneys. And they, and it's a large law firm, right? It's not, they have specialists in all the different areas of law. Okay, so that's...
Can we move on to three?
We're going to move on to three, yes. So, we currently don't have enough language in our current ordinance saying that if your registration number, you know, that it will expire if you don't pay your operations fee in a timely manner. So, that's not spelled out specifically in the ordinance. So, that's just cleaning that up. Does that one seem...
It's pretty straightforward.
Pretty straightforward.
Okay. And then the other thing is, you do have to complete your annual registration. We are putting a tool online so that this is a quick, you go in, you validate that all your information is correct. And we found in the past that we didn't have information for people. We didn't have their 24-hour contact, they didn't supply that, it would change, we wouldn't know that. So, and this is a, with the new software platform going in, this is a pretty seamless...
It's pretty straightforward.
Is that the portal that was sent to me, the same portal, Ken Doppit?
It is the, the short answer is yes, but that was actually for contractors. But it's the same, it is the same technology, MyGov.
Yeah, it's just a different...
MyGov, thank you.
It's a different module within MyGov. Okay. Okay, so everybody's okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay. Then, yeah, then we're sure of it. Okay, then, the other one to discuss is several other cities have an operation fee based on the number of vendors. So, you know, right now, we have an annual operation fee of $250. Other cities have done it to where it's per bedroom, per house size. Many other cities have scalable operations fees. And some of this is due to the little bit extra stress. And Legal has told us that our operation fee has to be justified based on kind of the effort that managing the S.T.R. or providing services to that S.T.R., you can't, it can't just be another money grab held by the city. So, Legal has advised of that. But other cities are doing it to where, you know, one bedroom might be $200, two bedrooms, $300. You know, there's a, there's a scale there.
Mayor? When I went to the Galveston S.T.R. task force meetings...
Excuse me, if y'all have a conversation, can you take it outside, please?
Thank you. When I went to the S.T.R. task force meetings, this was something that they, that Galveston was debating. And their final decision, in the meeting that I was in, was they decided to keep it one fee for everybody. The reason being, and Dawn, their attorney, was in the meeting with us. He said, you know, to keep it simple. They start making complicated and things just start getting too, it's just not worth the effort. So, at the last meeting that I went to, they were going to just have it one fee and leave it there. There's no decision, no, no having to go in and check for bedrooms, which, you know, is kind of against the Fourth Amendment. You know, so that way, if they say they have, we're not checking, we're not going to go in and go check bedrooms. So...
That's amazing.
Right. But, that's, so I'm going to just suggest to keep it on, keep it at one.
Can you delete that one, or people's more information and recommend it?
Well...
I've talked to the short-term rental, head of short-term rentals in Fredericksburg, who does have a staggered approach like this. They've had zero issues with it. I don't believe that, you know, having, it's the biggest bedroom, we have here five. I don't think that's too much to keep up with. If you say it's a three-bedroom, I think our city staff can figure out which number, dollar number to apply to that. I don't think the confusion is going to overwhelm anyone here for up to five bedrooms probably would be the max. So, I don't, I don't see an issue that Fredericksburg's had...
You would use sixty-seven.
Yeah. I don't, Fredericksburg's had no issues with it and they actually recommended it, so.
And that could probably be based on what, how it's advertised, right?
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah, so that would avoid the invasion, it's like, what if it's advertised on the platforms?
But you're saying exactly what we're talking about.
I really want nobody killing my house.
So, looking at, you know, any potential additions to the ordinance, you know, is there, is there, just say, keep it the $250? Is there a, you know, what numbers, I think Fredericksburg was...
Fredericksburg is, starting at one bedroom and up to five bedrooms, is $300, $500, $700, $900.
Any charge or something?
It would just be a, it's not a new charge, it's an altered charge. So, instead of just a flat $250, you would scale it based on number of bedrooms.
So, we get a flat $250 here, and you want that to be...
No, I'm not saying, I'm...
We're discussing it.
This is, this is, this is just suggestions that have been brought up as possible changes to the ordinance, and that's why we're discussing it. So... Mayor, I feel, oh, sorry.
Can we say that? I'm sorry.
Ginger, do you have a question?
No, I just said that we could talk in this meeting.
But we always do. I know, we usually, at this point, though, we're going to hold comments. We really need council to kind of get a bit of alignment and more input. And then, kind of at the end of each section, we can ask for comments from the floor.
I'm sorry, this is, this is a regular meeting and it's been a precedent that in a regular meeting during discussion, you have allowed citizens to come up to the podium and have comments. Are you telling me now that I can't do that? Because if that's what you want to do, you need to have somebody escort me out of the meeting, okay?
I'm saying, let's, I want to, I want to keep it open with council a little bit more and then, and then I will...
Okay, you need to have the chief come in and escort me out.
Take it back, take it back out.
Because you allow it in other meetings and you're saying now that you're not going to. Because you don't want to hear from the people that are here, so thank you.
I told you, he said that. Anyway, so that's...
Can we, I like the solution you're giving, people more information. I didn't even understand what you were doing when we started this, what's the intent?
The intent is to have a discussion about what we might like included or not included in a potential ordinance. This isn't about passing it. This is about saying, "Let's put an ordinance together that..."
Look at the $250 and see if they're right.
And is that something that we want to consider? We just want to leave it at a $250? You know, some of the concern has been the larger houses do put more, do put more... Put more stress on the infrastructure, extra trash that gets picked up. You know, the bigger houses do put more burden on the infrastructure. So, should there be a scalable cost that, you know, other cities have said, "Yeah, that makes sense." And, you know, the bigger houses create more infrastructure demand.
I don't think we have to do it with Fredericksburg's numbers, but I think, I think the scale of cost is, makes sense.
The cost of living is way different in Fredericksburg than it is here.
Yes, it is.
It's much different, because I can, for example, have a short-term rental there. And just knowing what it looks like in Fredericksburg, their cost of living is way different than Galveston Island or Jamaica Beach, just saying.
It expands, all that.
The homes are valued higher. The cost of living, I mean, things, it's a, I mean, it's a truly tourist town. And I don't know if you've looked at the value of homes there, they're outrageous. I can only live there in my dreams. I mean, it's a very expensive place to live. Fredericksburg, no country.
Oh, wow, really?
Yeah.
Okay, well, at this point, we will hear from, you need to stand up.
Different situation.
That's why I have...
Tell me your name again, so the Kendall committee should be getting it.
Let me tell it on 4413 Halkin Lane. I have a five-bedroom house. My house rented forty days this past year, forty days. So, you want to charge my house, who rents forty days, the same as a house that rents ninety percent of the time? That doesn't seem right to me. I think it should be, if you're going to like, charge $1,000 for my five-bedroom house that rents forty days, then I think you need to charge $1,000 for the three-bedroom house that rents the ninety percent. I don't think you should differentiate based on house size. My house size does not pull as much as the house across the street that rents the whole time.
Thank you, all right.
Robin Harris, 1659, way. Quickly, I'll refer you on the referendum in the election. There was an election where a hundred percent of the people who had short-term rentals don't vote in that election. So, a little bit skewed. When we had the fire station meeting and we had the boards with all of the motion notes, I think the vast majority of people said enforce the current ordinance, not. So, just to be clear on that, as far as this fee goes, I'm surprised some of you guys are for expecting more money. I know that's the typical progression of a government.
We're just talking.
I know, I just thought you'd... So, you know, if a larger house takes up more resources and thinks, has more people coming in, they also charge more money, they earn more revenue and they pay age no tax. And I think what this is, is you can't use the age no tax for infrastructure, but you can use, you can charge additional fees. So, I'm assuming if they do charge this additional fee, they'll be reducing our age no tax by an equitable amount, right? Because we already have more tax than we need anyway, so.
Well, I think about, it's set by the, also by the state's board, so that's what's passed through legislation.
Well, I don't have a good, I don't have a good feel for, on the operation fee in a proposed amendment, you know, in a proposed ordinance. Do we, do we feel we ought to... Is there justification to do a scale? If we want to do a scale, is just a flat $250 a better way to go?
I think the scale's okay, I just think it needs to be reasonable. I mean, I appreciate what Brandon, your data is awesome. I just think it's, we're not comparing apples to apples there because we're not the same as Fredericksburg. I don't think the scale's a bad idea, but I don't think we should charge $1,000 to Mrs. McDonald's for the game, I mean, it's just, it's expensive.
So, a different, a different rate structure? Or just a flat $250 and keep going with what we've got?
This is a brand-new thing that we've been starting just, what, over a year, a year ago? Let's leave it here. We can bring it up later, we see, but this is just brand-new.
Because are we supposed to enforce this November one?
No, no.
We just passed this, what, last spring? I was just wondering about the November one.
We passed it October last year. So, it's been about a year.
I was confused about the November first deal, effective. City ordinance effective November first.
So, this, you know, it was $50 before this. That's a different, that was a different ordinance, Melissa.
Oh, gotcha, okay, okay.
That was the one that...
Oh, that's part of the population.
It's combined.
I got it, I'm on the same page.
That was the one we passed that has Airbnb, the four platforms, calling.
Right, just came back, yeah, I got it.
That's why we're rolling it into work.
Got you. Mayor, two, two or three, two or three years ago, we raised it from zero to $50. And then we raised it last October to $250. And I think, you know, if I keep bouncing things around, let's just leave it here for now. I agree with Alderman Jones.
People got lucky for a long time, you know, that's what happens. It's like, hey, Jamaica Beach is cheap. Let's go, let's go invest there. And that's, I mean, that's how things happen, right? That we evolved. Now, do I agree with this, you know, these new aggressive numbers? Probably not. I mean, the $250, is that reasonable? Yeah, I think so.
Well, I think we're making progress. I think, I agree with Alderman and Jones, is that we just keep it simple, because this is new. But we're making progress, at least we're getting somewhere and not overcomplicate it and go down rabbit holes. We're just going to keep going deeper and deeper and I just think you've got to keep it simple.
What's an in-between? So, you, I mean, what you looked at, it sounds like one extreme versus our other extreme. Was there, how do we compare to other neighborhoods, I guess? I generally like to do a comparison, did you, did you take a look at that at all?
Comparing neighborhoods?
Yeah.
Well, I just talked to Fredericksburg.
Last time I talked to Galveston, theirs was $250 unless they changed it the last little bit. And so, if we want a true comparison, we'd be here, yeah.
Sure.
Yeah. So, I'm kind of hearing that maybe just leaving the flat $250.
Leaving it at $250.
On to the next one. This one is kind of the same thing, you know, you're going to get your permit pulled if you don't pay your taxes.
Very straightforward.
But not paid within what time?
Well, we do have to decide on the date, you know.
Ninety days?
Ninety days.
Yeah. Well, you have a quarter, you have a quarter to pay them, it's paid per quarter, yeah. So, are you...
So, are you gonna say you're gonna give us another ninety days? I don't think it needs to be that much time, it needs to be...
Sometimes people, and sometimes they just forget, it's that kind of thing, I mean, this is pulling your permit, right?
Well, this is charging... How often are you late on your credit card, because you don't want that late fee?
Well, we're talking about late fees too, but this is if somebody just flat-out doesn't pay their taxes, which...
From the time of the due day.
Yes, from the, from the time of the due day. So if it's due on October fifteenth, it's due the fifteenth of every quarter, okay? Right? So, um, it was just due, uh, a week ago. So it was due October fifteenth, so that would mean on January fifteenth, if you haven't paid your taxes, um, we're gonna send a note to Airbnb and VRBO that they take down your listing because your permit, your number, has been revoked.
I think thirty days is good.
Why, I think ninety days.
I think thirty days is good.
Yeah.
Do we send any correspondence already to people that pay your, your overdue on your taxes? I mean, did, did people get the warning, or?
Yes, well, they used to through Granicus. Granicus sent it automatically, Granicus tracked how much had been rented, and if, if it hadn't been logged into the platform, uh, it would send a no doubt. But, um, we don't do that with Granicus anymore, our new Mago platform will. So that's why it's important that, that email information gets kept updated, because that will go out by email, it won't go on mail. Mago will send an email, hey, Tickler, you haven't paid your taxes. But we're not talking just a penalty here, we're talking pulling a permit...
Right.
Which has, you know, so, you know, I mean, y'all can...
How about fifty days?
I was gonna go halfway, why don't we do forty-five?
Well, that's hard for me, it's easier on month-to-month.
Oh, I see.
So, um...
Thirty, it sounds good. But there should be, I mean, as long as you get warnings, I mean, you know?
That's right.
You're gonna have to send them an actual letter, not just an email, right? I, I read with the pages, like, these emails aren't legal.
But being ninety days late means they're actually on a hundred...
I think that's two. No, because it...
Does it's quarterly paid?
It's quarterly paid, so you could've had a rental on October thirteenth, right? And needed to pay the tax on it, or not October thirteenth. September twenty-fifth, you had a rental. The tax on that is due October fifteenth, so that entire quarter is due on October fifteenth.
But, uh, ninety days would be the next quarter, so you would be paying on two quarters of a month.
Yeah, you could have...
It seems like it through the...
Uh, I mean, I'm just, what do y'all want? Sixty days, sixty days?
Thirty.
Thirty, I'm with thirty.
What, from an administrative perspective, Kendall, what would you recommend is the X X there?
I'll get thirty days to pay my electric bill, so, um, I don't know, um, and I don't...
You have it paid within, you have it paid within thirty days, then, then your number's revoked?
So the, so the question, and I, and I need some, um, some, uh, here. Revocation means you've lost your permit, credit. And so if you have a cap, that means you've lost...
I know, I'm the...
No ability, you cannot get it back, is that, is that what we're saying?
I'm the S T R law for sure, but I think thirty days is too short.
I think, I, I agree, you could...
Thirty days is just too short.
I, I, I mean, I kinda like it, I mean...
It's a great idea, but...
Ninety days, like I said, that puts you actually due for your next quarter.
You're six months behind in ninety days, basically.
You can be six months behind.
Exactly.
I think sixty's a lot, sixty is a good problem.
So how long do we give people before we turn off their water?
Don't we lock that water if, if it's not paid here?
Yes. But it's still, what's that time?
Not many days.
Well, we, the thing about water is you can get it back when you do, this is...
This is losing your perm.
Then you don't have a cap rule.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, it's a, it's a hefty deal. I would also say that, um...
Maybe we don't want this revocation word in it, what's a better word?
Well, we already have penalty in there, right?
No, we're adding that. Uh, we have the right to, we've never, I'll get to that in a minute, we've never exercised it. So, um...
Because if they go ahead and begin to get paid up, and pay penalties and interest, then they can have it back again.
Yeah, I'm thinking the suspension should replace revocation.
Yeah, better word, I like that word.
Suspension until they get paid up.
What?
Because people make mistakes, we're gonna...
Wasn't there something about the, did not, did the attorney not say that maybe we couldn't do that?
No, what, what she had said was, when we first started really getting our hands around this, and we know that we had a bunch of people that have never paid taxes, and we feel very confident that they were way underpaying taxes. Uh, that we couldn't withhold their permit based on kind of suspicion of that, right? To, when we were just getting going, right? So, uh, she had said, no, we couldn't withhold the permit until they got all of their back taxes paid.
Okay, so, but that's what you're just saying right now, you're gonna suspend it until they pay all their taxes?
What if it's a felony of not revocation, but you don't pay taxes, then you're suspended for sixty days, ninety days to rent it, then you get it back, if that happens two or three times, then maybe a revocation.
That's a good idea.
I like that. Okay, so we'll just say it's a suspension of your permit, and what that means is that the, your listing will be taken down because you have a suspended permit, that, that after you rectify, clarify, uh, or live through the penalty period, then you get it back.
I like Brandon's idea.
So like three times?
There you go.
And after the third time, you're at the vouch.
Yeah, that's right, no more than that.
Three times, you're out, then you can get it revoked.
I like, I like that.
If we disconnect your water, recharge your fee to connect back, or they'll need to connect, reconnect it, is there a, they'll need to...
Well, we're gonna talk about the state law penalties that we can apply to the taxes.
That's interesting stuff, I'm talking, you get the, it's another, it's another two hundred and fifty, or whatever it is, to get your...
For re- to reconnect, yeah. And, and basically, in our existing ordinance, if it says that if you get three violations of the S T R ordinance, right? So that's already in there, because they would be in violation if they didn't pay it. If three violations of the S T R ordinance, then your permit is suspended for six months. After six months, you have to pay the two hundred and fifty-dollar application fee again, and the two, and then... So that's the penalty, is you, you have to reapply...
Plus the back tax.
At two hundred and fifty dollars, yeah, plus, plus the back taxes. And you also have to be current on your operation fee, because the operation fee might have come due during that time of suspension. So I think that...
I think that's a good idea, we can never be...
That language is already in there. I just think we have to say that after so many days, if you don't pay your hotel occupancy tax, then your permit is suspended, and we have to decide, timeframe for both of them.
But then again, how much do you give them a chance, how do, how, I, I like Brandon's...
It already says it, three, the ordinance already says...
Oh, that's three, and then it's revoked? Then, that's what I'm wondering, like, is it then revoked?
No, we probably need to...
That's what I'm asking, yeah, that's what I suggest, is that, back to Brandon's comment, is that that is revoked, because then that's not a serious person that's taking it seriously about their S T R investment.
Yeah.
I think that there needs to be that revocation back in, we'll give them three times of being suspended, but after that, three, I mean, three, third time, you're out.
This will be based on their own paperwork, right? Because we're technically pulling it all automatically, so this should be applicable to very few people.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's a fair way to put it down, yeah.
The, the majority of the people will just turn in their quarterly paperwork, their taxes have already been paid.
Yes.
Uh, but if we show that they've been renting on one of the platforms that are not automatically, then... Yes, then we could look at saying, hey, our tool shows us that you've rented this much, and you haven't paid us, so help, help us figure this out.
Yep.
Uh, okay. They, then the next one is, we are allowed, we've never done it, um, we're probably gonna start doing it, because we have a lot of late, hot tax fees that were never paid. Um, and that's kind of our next focus, is to start pursuing those people more aggressively. Um, we, we had a, I don't know how many of y'all remember, we had a big issue where many of our owners mistakenly thought Airbnb and VRBO were withdrawing their taxes and paying us. They were withdrawing state taxes, but not taxes to us. And so, um, we've been working with those folks, and, uh, but by state law, we have the ability to charge interest and late fees.
Okay.
Uh, and I think referencing that, and the, the, the state law that dictates that, I think referencing in the ordinance is just beneficial to people, rather than us just starting with it.
Does state law say, tell us how much?
Mm-hmm.
Do, do you recall that?
Um, no.
Okay.
It goes against prime, and, and there's a number that the state...
Also, it's gonna change. Total change, okay, well, that's good.
Yeah, and then you're allowed to charge, the late fee, can you remember, Kendall?
What?
The late fee is...
Fifteen percent?
I think it's fifteen percent of the total due, and then, uh, and then after so many days of not paying it, I think it's thirty days, it's just on your credit card, if you haven't paid it within thirty days of the due date, uh, interest starts accruing at the agreed-upon state-published number.
Okay.
Now, it also says, though, that a city can enact different ordinances if they want it to be different. But I'm not a proponent of that, I think we just follow the state law and how it...
Sure.
I don't, I don't think we're gonna have a big issue with late hotel taxes, once everybody understands we really are paying attention.
Every year.
Um, the other thing is the bedroom definition. Uh, we don't, we don't really specify in any size, and most, most ordinances and most other things say, a bedroom has to be seventy square feet, uh, some of them say a hundred square feet. So, um, the, the proposal that, that I'd recommend is that if you have a hundred square, it has to be a hundred-square-foot bedroom in order to get two. If you have a smaller bedroom than that, um, you get one.
Well, uh, Mayor, at number eight, nine, and ten, you know, it is kind of this inspection, definitions, bathrooms, and, um, I, I'm concerned, how are we going to... It says here, a mandatory inspection. Are you gonna do a mandatory inspection for bedrooms?
That's a proposal, right? We're not, so, um...
Why would you do that?
That's, that's, that's a...
You'd do the inspection.
That's a, that's a Fourth Amendment.
Well, that number, we have to, we, we would have to, we'd have to... Cleanly, we'd have, we'd have to contract with, maybe, you know, if we were possible, I, no, I, I don't know, it would be very difficult.
Again, I looked this one up, I, I looked this one up, and let me read something to you from T M L. Um, I'm gonna, let me just start here, the Fourth Amendment. The Fourth Amendment, United States Constitution, the right of the people to be secure in their persons, houses, papers, and effects against unreasonable searches and seizures, shall not be violated, and no warrants shall issue but upon probable cause, supported by the oath or affirmation particularly describing the place to be searched and the persons or things to be seized. And from T M L, can a code enforcement officer, official or code enforcement officer go into a private property without a search warrant to determine a code violation exists on the property? Nineteen seventy-six, the Supreme Court in two separate cases held that, except in carefully defined classes of cases, routine administrative inspections of both residential and commercial premises for purposes of detecting code violation is unreasonable unless authorized by a search warrant. Second, there is an administrative search warrant, Article eighteen oh five of the Code of Criminal Procedure, which expressly allows a magistrate to issue a search warrant to a fire marshal, health officer, or code, code enforcement official of the city for the purpose of allowing the inspection of any specified premises to determine the presence of a fire or health hazard, of unsafe building condition, or a violation of any fire, health, or building regulations, statute, or ordinance. But this means you would need probable cause, and we would need a cer- an administrative search warrant for each and every violation, which means you'll need to take it to a judge and have them sign, well, I, I...
Mandatory inspections are done in most cities.
A second, a second thing you could always ask for a law...
Because when you get, when you sign up for a permit, authorizing your house to be rented, then there, there is an implied agreement that you will uphold the rules and regulations pertaining to it.
Yeah, because we don't force you to have an inspection, you don't have to have a license to rent your house.
So, um...
So we're not forcing anybody.
It's done, I'm not saying, I'm not saying I'm a, we're talking about it, right?
Right.
But I'm saying, you know, there is a, there is an alternate side, that, uh, most other cities require an inspection before issuing a permit.
Entering into the permit itself is a voluntary...
Yes.
Action.
Uh, choice of action. So, um, anyway, but I'm gonna let Ms. McDonald, real quick, sorry.
I love this one, I, this is my favorite of all, so, um... So we're going to say, we're in a moratorium now on S T Rs. So if you, if no one else can, no one else has done one, as a...
We didn't decide anything.
Yeah, I know, I'm just saying. So that, this is very hypothetical. So if, so anybody, oh, we better go get one just in case, because, you know, they're gonna stop by. So now, this means that everybody who has signed up, that they're gonna do it, whether it's residents or not, then we're gonna go, and even if you're a resident, and you're not a, you, you have the certificate, but you don't actually rent it, your house is still up for inspection, because you can't differentiate between this is a homeowner that's an S T, that is, or a regular. You're welcome to come to my house anytime. You're also welcome to...
The proposal is that the owner, that if you own the home right now, if, if we were past that, if you own it now, you can get a permit anytime you want, as long as you own the house.
Right.
Like, ten years from now, you can get a permit, because you still own the house now, when it's proposed. That's what was in the information that I read.
But then, anyone that you're allowing to be at any time, I don't know, I just think the residents...
Just when you apply for a permit.
Just when you apply.
Right, but how many residents actually, at this last go-round, got a permit just to have one just in case, because nobody knows what this council's gonna do? So, that's mine.
No, you're right, you're right. We're trying to eliminate the just-in-case scenario.
Well, there's a lot of nothing.
Yeah.
I would be a just-in-case.
So the mandatory inspection to confirm the number of bedrooms, bedrooms, and acres, is if you get a permit for it to have an S T R?
Well, right now, right now, we have, in the ordinance that we passed last time, it says that with thirty days' notice...
Yes.
We can come inspect your home, and, uh...
If there's probable cause, then...
And, and it's because the sketches provided, when you drive around the house and look at the exterior of the house with windows compared to the sketch, and you say, hm, this doesn't look exactly right.
Then we need to get an administrative search warrant.
Who's the we, who's the we that's here to inspect? We, we will inspect.
The code enforcement.
And that's Katie?
It's only, only fire, health, and code enforcement can, can inspect.
So, um...
Is she licensed to do that, to inspect? Is she able to do that?
Yeah, for, for...
Under the current ordinance, under the current ordinance, it says with thirty days' notice, uh, to confirm your sketch, right? But, but it's not mandatory, right? Right, right now, this would say, if you wanna come get a permit, we're going to inspect your house.
And, 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 which is, they apply for a permit. They're, they're, they're allowing us, as part of that permit, to come in and verify, right? They're absolutely...
Yep.
Okay, okay.
So, um...
So, they give up their right that you're talking about?
You don't give up your right. You still, but what, do you, you don't give up that right?
Oh, God. So, um...
In this one instance, though, you're allowing someone to come in and inspect.
You don't give up that right, anyway. I, unless you have probable cause.
What probable cause is a need to go and inspect to, to verify what, what they...
It's a voluntary action to get...
Then you can, and you can sign, and we can do a voluntary consent. You can ask for voluntary consent, but not everyone's gonna volunteer.
So, they don't get the permit, that's the point. You can get the permit and not be inspected, or you can be inspected and get the permit.
But that's a, that's a, that's again, you know, gonna go against...
You're supposed to permit and, and you fill it out, so then we have the right to go in and...
You're not violating, because you have the ability to say, no, you cannot come into our house. The city has, you have the right to...
The current ordinance has, has words in there about, yes, being able to inspect.
I'm the paralegal and I work with the IRS and I work with the F D I C. Constitutionally, you guys really need to see legal advice 'cause every one of you is doing something wrong.
Hey, me, me?
Not, not you. Oh, thank you. Called out the constitution there. But seriously, each one of you legally will be responsible for going into somebody's house without probable cause. And I'm just telling you, this is something that you guys need to see, see. For what, I'm, I'm actually, I'm actually so freaking surprised that you guys don't know this. You need to make sure that you're aware of what you're thinking of doing 'cause that is unconstitutional. And if that legal person that you have, that attorney, you better get him out here. You better get him to interpret everything to you because there is something wrong. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, my concern with this push is just the sheer logistics.
Yeah.
The three hundred and thirty S D Rs an hour per...
Yeah.
Per inspection.
Again, we're just discussing this and that's a good point.
What I'm saying is, that's, you do the math, that's forty some days...
Sure.
Yeah.
Before you can, before you can get you, you know, before you can get your permit. And that's, um, and so that's actually two months 'cause we only, we only work about twenty days a month.
True.
And that's a day, so...
Maybe as it's written now is enough.
I, I think it is. I, I think the way it's written now, uh, in the existing ordinance, this is... Yeah, yeah, I think it's adequate.
It's hard to there, it's hard to pass.
I agree too.
I don't, I don't think we need to go...
So, you're saying we're not advocating one way or the other, we're having a discussion.
Well, we have to get enough of a feel, but the point of this discussion is to propose an ordinance that is well vetted, well understood, and, uh...
Exactly.
And, and then we, we're discussing the language in the ordinance. Is it clear, is it concise, rather than as much of the content of the ordinance?
We can review that when we do that, define an ordinance.
Anyway, but going back to, to bedroom definition, you know, do we need, in order to classify it as a bedroom, granted, we're not gonna go inspect, we're gonna, you know, allow people's good faith. Uh, but if it doesn't make sense that this square footage has seventeen bedrooms...
I think it's a, what, I think what you proposed might be a little too complicated. If it's a hundred square foot, that's allowed for two, and if it's a one or whatever. We've already got the two plus two or a hundred and fifty for whatever.
You're okay with that then?
Yeah, I think that, that just makes, but I think we should define that a bedroom is a hundred square foot or whatever, and has, has egress to the outside for safety. So, we can't just do closets or...
But that means, how are you gonna confirm that each room has a, has a window?
That would be on the application if they're saying it does.
Their, their sketch. And if we, if we feel there's a question, then from the ex, from the external perspective, if you look at the sketch, you know, if they show, they show four bedrooms and there's only two windows there, well, we probably have an issue.
Yeah.
Right? And, uh, in order for us to grant them that, they're, they're gonna have to come up with a way to prove it, and that proving it could be an inspection.
Lot of, there's a lot of proposed pictures online and stuff.
Or you could receive a complaint from renter.
From a renter. Yeah, uh, yes.
I just said real quick, Ron, here. Um, I think you're getting a lot of clean veterans that are under a hundred square feet in these beach houses. If you do under a square feet, it's gonna be a, I think there's a big difference between about eighty and a hundred.
That was just a random, Ron.
Yeah, yeah, there's something, it's gonna be like the occupancy thing. There's gonna be a big difference between two plus four, two plus two for a lot of people in houses here.
Freeport does seventy square foot, is that...
Yeah, I mean, that seems, yeah.
More reasonable.
I'll tell you.
Yeah, I kinda like seventy square feet. Isn't, isn't in the bedroom size.
Yeah.
That's small.
Yes. With, with a window and closet.
Or, or just don't, don't put size at all.
No.
Just simply put a secondary egress is required.
A secondary or, or...
Secondary egress to outside. Okay, you have to have a door to get into a, oh, perhaps, right? Okay, gotcha. Okay, you, you have to have an egress to outside.
Yeah, I'm okay with this, I'm pretty thing with that.
Cancer's a...
I think we need the number.
Okay, so we agree.
So, you can't have block windows.
Right.
Or no?
Or no. The block window is not acceptable, because you can't...
Okay. Okay, um...
So, that's, that eighty or seventy, uh, square feet, does that include the closets?
Uh, it would be the same, but I think we've agreed at this point, we're not gonna fit square footage. All, all we're gonna do for a bedroom is specify that it, it needs an egress point to outside.
Is now...
Needs to be have egress.
Is there a definition for egress?
Uh, yeah, we're gonna have to put it in there because my intent, it's, well, it's per the code when it was built, right? We're not gonna make people come in and have it to the current code, which is so much off the floor. You know, it just needs a window, it's gotta be a certain size. I mean, you gotta get a person through it, it's gotta be an egress.
Well, I can get out of most windows, but then, you guys, they don't get.
So, I, you know, just so it doesn't have to be a casement window versus some, I mean, so if it has a crank, it's okay and...
Yeah, you might have to bust out the window and get out.
I just, but there are some, some things that do require...
It can't be a fixture one.
Yeah, it can't be a fixture.
It has to be a certain height for those people.
No, we don't. That code changed so many places over the years. I just think we say it's a secondary egress point, and, you know, to the outside, not a...
Yeah, don't specify any...
Not a first window. Because trying, trying to go back and verify when that window was put in and what code it was under.
No, we're, we're not capable of doing that. But, you know, let's keep with the, the KISS principle, with the try.
Um, and, and here again, a lot of this was taken from what some other cities have done, um, which is why it was brought up for discussion, to try to see where we're at. And so, one of that was one four bathroom for five occupants, um, and...
Well, Mayor, I've raised four children in one bedroom. Charlie and my twins were ten years old. They, you know, they weren't neglected because they only had one bathroom.
Uh, yeah, I don't think so. Okay, that one can go. Um, I think the mandatory inspection we talked about, we decided what we have there now is enough.
Yeah.
Uh, we, there, here again, many other cities have a absolute maximum occupancy on their property. So, um, and, and this one I question because from, you know, it goes back to what I've been told. If I say this rental can only have twelve people on the property, then the house next door can only have twelve people on the property.
Right.
But many other cities have put in maximum occupancies and, and they are, they're flying. They're not being challenged and, uh, they've not been taken to court over it, which is why we're bringing it up for discussion, right? I mean, when we talk about the party houses, you know, if you said, we can never be more than this many people on the property, cannot, how many of those party houses are the ones that are not registered?
Again, I, I don't know. Don't you mind that?
You know, 'cause if we, if, if the ones that are not complying with not being registered and not paying their hot tax, obviously, that's one, two problems, probably not, uh, uh, you know, following our suggestions for the other two. So, if, um, you know, once we, we close them down, maybe this won't be a problem anymore.
Uh, yeah, and I'm, I'm okay not, not putting this in.
Yeah, we just asked this a few months ago, let's leave it be.
How would you possibly enforce that?
Well, the way other cities are doing it, and I'm just telling the other cities, they've got, uh, in their ordinance, it says that if any city official or law enforcement witnesses, you know, you got twelve people, you got sixteen people out on the deck, you know, they get a ticket. Uh, there, we can't go into a house and count heads and beds, but if you see sixteen people partying out in the yard and it's an S T R...
I don't, I don't, I don't.
Is that just for S D Rs? 'Cause I mean, what if I'm having a family reunion and I have twenty-two people at my house?
Yes.
That's where I'm at.
That's what I'm saying, other cities have done it, I don't know how they're, how they're doing it.
'Cause I'm gonna, in last year, there was a lot of people at my house.
Apply for a party permit for that house, like, twice a year or something like that. Is there something that was proposed at one point?
Oh, we have, we have turned around different things that, you know, uh, we could, we could do something if we felt we needed to, right?
If you wanted to have a wedding or whatever, and there's, there's ways of, I think there is actually an ordinance I've looked up that if you're gonna have something advanced at your house, it has to be limited, and if there's, I don't know, all the S B, police officer, president, that type of thing.
At the park.
This is our residents, too.
In our, in our ordinances?
My son's getting married, and he's planning on getting married, uh, in Jamaica Beach, and, you know, planning on having a party at my house, so... None of those people are staying the night, though, but we are certainly gonna have a little get-together. Whether my next roommate realizes it or not, we are going to, so...
We set this up in an S T R on a street.
But there's something already on the books.
They're gonna call the police, they're gonna arrest me.
Will we see it here?
There's an existing ordinance that...
It is one.
Order that.
Yeah, you can pull that up.
And you just, you just have to...
I thought it was overnight, I thought the ordinance says overnight, yes.
Uh...
I believe it says overnight.
Can you send that, ordinance to me, the over there?
Yeah.
Can you send it to my chair?
Yeah, I just pulled it over the summer. Yeah, I did.
Anyway, okay, um, well, I, I, I think at this point, we need to let more cities see if they find a way to, to get handle on this.
Great idea.
I don't, I don't wanna be all suit one on this.
Okay.
Agreed.
Can you add me to those two, Andrew?
Yeah, yeah, you're in.
Thank you.
Could you, could you instead, could you send that to me and let me send that out there?
Oh, perfect, that's right, yeah.
There you go.
Yeah.
Uh, okay, so...
At least thirteen.
Yes, yeah.
Thirteen looks good to me.
Did we discuss enforcement of occupancy?
Well, I think, yeah, because it kind of rolls...
Yeah, yeah, it goes with that one, got it.
Um, so what, what this one is, is currently our ordinance says that, uh, if you have three violations of the S T R ord, of that ordinance, that your permit will be suspended for six months. Uh, this one says, if you have a party house and you're constantly being an impact to your neighbors through trash, you know, we, we have to def, through any violation associated with the property. If your renter was speeding or littering on the beach or, you know, no. But if it's, if it's a violation at that property, then those would add up, too. So, I think the way one city did it...
But that also, you're telling me that, um, if, this is far-fetched, but if they commit murder on that property, the owner is responsible.
Yes.
Uh, there is, it's saying that you get three strikes, right? Or however many we want. So, if a house continues to have people there that are getting tickets, right? Getting tickets.
How about, how about this? And this is what I brought up. And this is what I brought up earlier, is...
About to ask you, I don't know, that's...
Someone gave me this a few years ago, and it's called a, um, frequent citations or arrests made by code enforcement officials. So, this is something that, the intent of this ordinance is to penalize excessive consumption of law enforcement resources. So, we're not talking about, because these people are responsible for their behavior, and they get the ticket, the guests are. Owners need to be alerted so they know what's going on with the property. And if it, if they're getting too many violations of nuisance items, then we're not going after them for someone else's behavior. We're going, we're, we're letting them know that this is happening, and we could cite them then. And if they get three of these, because law enforcement keeps showing up, then, uh, have, have them to be called. And, um, but anyway, here is, here is one oster.
I think owners are ultimately responsible for these, in their house. If it's a recurring over and over again, then that's an owner problem, not, I mean, it's a renter problem also, but it's also an owner problem who's not, you know, watching the house. They're not regulating, they're not enforcing anything.
I think the quote-unquote bad ones know what's going on.
They know what's going on.
They just don't care.
Yeah, so this, you know, this, this would allow, and we can work the numbers, work how we do it, but I think we all agree, and I think all of the good short-term rental owners that are present here today, 'cause y'all, y'all care, and I know y'all care about your houses, um, you know, we all wanna have a way to get rid of that actors or to, to minimize their impact to the community.
Can I give this to Kendall?
Is that it? And this is the excessive response? Is that a proposed ordinance or an ordinance that somebody...
It, it is something that someone else gave to me.
Okay.
And I tried to give it to previous administration and they wouldn't look at it, so...
Yeah, yeah. Um, Kendall? But anyway, this would, this would expand it to say, you know, that, that if your property has excessive law enforcement intervention, uh, what I wanna make sure doesn't happen is that... Okay, let's do a scenario whereby, uh, there's a person and they have a S T R next to them. That S T R is well-managed, no real issues. This person just wants a neighbor there, not a different person every weekend. And this person calls law enforcement every single day, every single weekend. This person is calling law enforcement to say, he looked at me wrong. Uh, his, he slammed his car door in the middle of the night and it bothered me. So, I, I, that would give us the ability to go after that person for excessive law enforcement. I mean, the owner of that home...
Well, that would be based on convictions, you don't, you can't take away anything for, for...
Okay, I'm sorry, it's not, I didn't see that read that way. It said law enfor, it didn't...
It, it's, it's law enforcement, but, but it's on a conviction, you can't, okay, you can't.
So, that's what, that's what this is trying to do as well, is saying, if a home has so many convictions for whatever, the, the ones that would apply to the house, not the community at large, that would impact your neighbors.
This would affect, this, this wouldn't target S D Rs, it would apply to everybody. I had a few homes that are near me that hope and do things, you know?
Long term, short term?
Well, I, full-time owners that have full-blown big parties all the time, you know? And, and sometimes at two o'clock, I'd like them to turn down the music. So, you know, it would, it would apply to everybody, not just S D Rs.
So, what I'm hearing is, huh? Okay.
Yeah, I mean, you wanna, you wanna curb frivolous complaints, and everybody has to be treated equally, whether it's an S T R, whether it's a, you know, full-time, part-time owner, I mean, all the...
So, the thing to, the, so the thing to do here would be to look at, um, proposing a nuisance ordinance or a...
It's a type of nuisance, but yes.
Type of nuisance that we define, and then, uh, but, but is there something that...
Specific to STR.
Yeah.
We don't want it to be specific, we don't want it to be specific to STRs, that's targeting a, a class of people, we don't, cannot do that. Can't, uncertain. Um, but it has to affect everyone, the same. You can't treat a class of people different than this class of people, it's, they're, they're the same people.
Um...
So, we're saying this is a...
So the way, the way, um, I think it's New Braunstein's rules is written, is if a home is issued through the police, not an administrative fine, right, but a citation for violating of an ordinance, not one of our administrative STR ordinances, then if there's three of them, once they have three, it constitutes a major conviction, and then, I mean, it's pretty complicated. Then after three major convictions, and a major also be a violation of the administrative portions of the STR ordinance.
Well, I, yeah, I think I'd love to see that a lot better, but I'm just still thinking, you know, the owner isn't responsible for this person who, who decides to kill his old grandmother at the, at the rental home.
I agree, that's why they... But, but if there is a recurring pattern of that, then what, what remit, what, what action can be taken?
Yeah, there's gonna be something, either the owner's gonna just pass the fee fine onto the renters anyway, probably. They need to be responsible for their, for something. Otherwise, they have zero...
Skimming.
Well, and how do we let an owner know that there's been a...
I did the citation.
Well, but they can't get, the owner can't get a, a citation for noise, because they're not the ones that...
Making the noise. They can't, they can't get a citation for parking illegally.
Just like, because my son comes and visits me, and he gets a, um, a part, uh, he gets a citation for something, I'm not gonna get his, he's grown up now, I'm not gonna get the ticket he gets to visit.
Okay, so, I, I'm... I, I'm sensing that we need to pursue this one through a different form of ordinance.
Yes.
Or, I tell you what, let's have, let's have, when legal comes to talk to us about a cap, let's have him talk to us about the legality of revoking, revoking a permit for a given period of time in the event that we had an accumulation of X.
Yeah.
And we can ask legal to, to better explain to us if, options, and how that could be upheld.
Yeah.
Okay?
I agree, I agree.
Um, then the other thing is, you know, asking for a bit more reporting with the hotel occupancy tax. And, uh, I, I, you know, I feel that's reasonable to show supporting documentation, uh, on, and they can print off their, their snapshot pages from each of those reports. If they, if they, if they can't, they probably shouldn't be running an STR.
Yeah, I'm right.
It's, uh...
Sure.
Okay, and then the other one is, uh, that, that properties must comply with all the city ordinances. Right now, it just says you have to comply with the zoning ordinance, but we have other ordinances that apply to a property, uh, around getting your permits and building permits, and, you know, that you're no different than anybody else.
Just like, just like any other owner.
Yes, you must comply.
Everybody, it should be very consistent.
Yeah, it's, it's just a reminder of that. And then, uh, the other thing is you can, can only allow one registration per address. So, uh, we, we have a couple of instances in the neighborhood where we have homes that were built with, uh, multiple homes on them, on a single lot. But, but we wanna say, each registration number has to have an address.
They're duplexes, basically?
How...
No duplexes?
These aren't even duplexes, they're, they're separate establishments, but they may be
Connected.
Connected with a walkway or something.
In a, yeah.
So you're saying they're just not allowed to, to have a separate permit for each one, so they can't rent them individually?
We have one address and one registration. That's reasonable. Um, and then, uh, the other thing is...
Sorry, sorry. My, mine's one-six-six-one-three-Curden is a home, and then a garage made into a loft. So, and it's the garage, and then they built on top, this is back nineteen seventy-seven.
Mm-hmm.
And I've, I've tried to get, even for the phone bill, I can't even get two boxes, um, of Wi-Fi, because I only have one address.
Yes.
Even though the, the loft over here, it's just like, just the walkway, the one-bedroom door, you walk, and it's right there, it's just, they're wet, that's it. Walk in, it's, the, this internet will not turn down on it, and vice versa, I can't communicate. I had to get two boxes, okay? I had to get two different companies to come out, because AT&T would not, oh, no, there's only one house. I tried to go to the post office and tell them to give me two addresses, because this is nineteen seventy-four.
You have to be plotted that way.
Yes.
And we can't plot it that way because it's not allowed in our zoning?
Yeah, right. Not a problem, however, uh, I put A B, like, A B, for whenever my nephew's come over, whenever I have somebody come over, A B, so that they don't notice the loft and the little house, 'cause I'm always at the loft, they tell. And then my comment is, when I applied for the STR, even though I don't rent both of them all the time, but I went ahead and got a registration, like she says, a lot of people did, because what if tomorrow I wanna do it? What if something happens? I wanna mature, so I'm, I'm paying extra, I'm paying the two-fifty extra, you guys charge me that. So now you're telling me that you're gonna take it away?
If, if we, if you had two registrations on that one lot...
I have two registration numbers and two refrigerators, one, two. Even though I don't rent the little loft, I live there. When I'm, I, I, I can't live here full-time right now, because my mom, I take her one, and I just don't want them there for... And this, this is my homestead, by the way.
Oh.
Okay, so I voted, and I'm not voting for you, a lot of us do not.
If we take a, if we take a registration away because of the, because our zoning says one property on the one lot...
Yeah, but why did you give it to me in October of last year?
We would, uh...
And now you would wanna take it away from me, is that what you're saying right now?
Yes.
So then I can have one registration?
Yes.
Even though I have the little loft that eventually if I wanna rent it out, because it's got, it's got, it's got a kitchen of its own, it's got a kitchen, it's got everything.
We erroneously gave you two registrations, because our zoning says...
One per...
One per lot, right?
You're only renting one at a time, right?
Yeah, one, one at a time, because they're mostly stayed in one, one property or another, yes. But I wanna have, that was the option, yeah?
Separate listings or one listing?
Yeah, different everything, different everything, because nobody would give me, since it was two little houses, that they're separated, there was like, and the only reason I would say we would buy that house as a one was because it's got one meter, water meter. Or else you would've get two different houses, that was the only thing. So, but I have two, you guys bill me for two? You bill me for one, you bill me, all you do with a differential one, you put a zero-one on one bill and a zero-zero on the other. So you're billing twice, you're billing me, so, you're billing me twice, you know, I got electric, electric?
You can have as many meters as you want on your property.
Yeah, no, I only have one meter, but you ta, you charge me for electricity, I get charged twice. We have charge... One-six-six-one-three-Curden.
One-six-six...
One-three-Curden.
Okay.
One...
Six-six-one-three-Curden.
Okay, and just three?
One-three-Curden, so you are L E W. See, you are L E W, so Linga Way Curden. So I just wanted to know, was like, that, this one's is a very special situation.
I know, and we have a few with the name.
Do you have that one, the only one, 'cause nobody was being able to compare to us, and then, and they wanted...
Ah, there's a couple, there's a couple of places where the lot has been planted as one big lot, and there's...
Well, see, and each house sits on each block. Like, the little, the, the, the house, one house is on one, on its own lot, and the little garage with the loft on the top is its own lot.
But it's planted as one.
Yes, and I was told by Robert that if I wanted to do a double address, I need to just replant it.
Yes.
And get a separate, separate address, and then get, and then get a...
And then you would have to get a variance, because those replants probably wouldn't fall within our building code.
Yeah, 'cause it's gonna be eight feet from the fence line or something like that.
You would have to be...
So, so, okay, all right, so, yeah, that's, that's gonna work for me.
Uh, we, uh, we'd have to go for variance as well. Um, but what we're saying is moving forward, we're trying to establish that you get one registration per person. So you, you can't eventually, you know, turn a lower level into something and try to get another registration for it, and... Anyway, so that's the proposal there.
It's a good rule.
It is.
And then, the, the other thing this is on here really about is to find out from council if we can't put a parking ordinance just for STRs. Uh, if we do a parking ordinance, it has to be for the whole city.
Okay.
So is there any interest from council to pursue indirect parking ordinance of some type?
It is possible.
Uh, okay, I mean, that's what, that's...
And it's not just STRs, and it's not just when it's rental period, I mean, I almost smacked into somebody the other night on that curb, because it was dark, there's no street lighting.
On my own street, that happened to me, I almost, I were out.
So the discussed parking is really about to make sure everybody understands that we can't enforce parking only on STRs.
That's right.
It, it has to happen to everybody. And so, um, somebody a little sites, but that's why, but if there's a desire to, to look at our parking ordinance and say, is there something we can do to, uh, to, to minimize the very crowded streets we get when there's an STR?
It's two and a half years to get here.
So, okay, so we will finally add that to it.
Finally...
That's a good idea, Mayor.
Go ahead.
What if, what if a house doesn't have a driveway? I mean, there's a lot of houses that I've seen in the neighborhood that don't have concrete driveway.
They were built with driveways, lots of people just dropped, just, just... We don't, we're not, we're not, we probably will not, but some, a lot of cities have parking ordinance that says you must be parked on your driveway. You know, you can't park in your yard. Uh, I don't ever see us doing anything like that, because how would we define that? We have a lot of streets, a lot of homes that just have grass and shale, and, you know, no real driveway.
Yeah, to your point.
So we would, yeah, we, we recognize that. Okay, so, um, I think that concludes our discussion.
Yes.
Praise the Lord.
Praise the Lord. And, um, let's see, for my mayor's report, it's actually very short, I'd like to thank J D I C for, uh, cleaning up the long buses. And they put up their fencing, some kind of galvanized, um, chicken wire that won't fall down and blow down. And I'd like to thank the police for working with, um, the Circle K to try to, they're, they're working harder on keeping their parking lot cleaned up, 'cause that's where all that stuff blows all the time. Um, and then the other thing, Kendall, I have a request for you. Um, I saw where there's that proposal to put some wind turbines across the bay. Could you, could you find out how citizens can go comment on that? When the public comment is gonna be, and, uh, do you know something about that, Jay?
There is a website, um, and I don't, I think it's the state of Texas. It just had a permit.
Okay.
'Cause what they're gonna do is they're gonna put one in, but I think the permit is for like sixty-four.
Okay.
So there is a, I'll, I'll send it to you if you want.
Thank you, thank you.
There is a public comment, country.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that we got that information out to the community, that, that this is being proposed, and, um, you know, if citizens would like to go make a comment or keep them informed. All right, that's all I have. Uh, we have no executive session, so do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
Thank y'all, thank you.
I couldn't wait. I already did you that.
Yeah, I guess I got something, so, I'm trying to get it.
Does that's your wife, do you have a...
She's doing good. She's tired.
So she's going through the first permit step?
Doing well.
Calling, she's at the fourth permit.